I'm looking for something, I'm not ready. Oh yeah, here it is.
Okay. Okay, we're on the air, guys. Meeting come to order. Let's start with the pledge, and Suzu, will you lead the...
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Well, the clerk called roll.
Mayor Johnston?
Here.
Mayor Protem Wierich?
Here.
Councilmember Blatts?
Here.
Councilmember Francina?
Here.
Councilmember Haney?
Here.
Okay. We have a quorum? Okay, our first item up is presentation. Let's see how this... We're... Tonight, we're going to honor somebody who's really fairly remarkable. Not that we don't have many remarkable citizens in this town. But Roger Conrad. Roger, we are here tonight to recognize your public service on the Arts Commission and as you retire, but also to award you the lifetime achievement in the arts this year, or for last year, in 2016. And I have a whole lot of stuff here, but I'm going to get some help from Michael in telling the audience of the many, many things that you have done, both in your life and done for the community.
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. So we'll start with the... A lot of the things, I understand you're the guy who figured out a lot of the lighting here, particularly for the fact that we have a sort of an art gallery here. More than sort of one, but it's an adapted art gallery. And then because of the nature of the locations of the pieces of work, lighting is an extraordinarily important part of it. I'm going to just read this first part of this, so I don't miss it. But then Michael will come up and fill us in. Roger's background is actually in industrial design. As part of his training, he was schooled in graphics, structural design, and photography. Things that is fairly remarkable, and by the age of the group here, I think, we'll all recognize the name Buckminster Fuller. When I was in college, Bucky came and built the geodesic dome on our campus, and you worked with him.
Probably gave a very long speech, I'm sure.
Right. Very entertaining, too. And then another thing, and I think if you're downtown, if I'm not mistaken, I don't think they're counterfeit, but the Charles Ray, the Ames Chair that's in one of the windows in the arcade, another person that Roger had worked with, the Ames Brothers, different Ames, different spelling. Okay, Michael, come on up and tell us more about Roger's achievements.
Well, I really want to speak about Roger's work on the Arts Commission, because that's where I've known him. And to start off by saying how much we miss him on the Arts Commission. We have a new member replacing him that we're happy with. But for nine years, Roger was an absolute bulwark in the Commission, providing a sense of stability and continuity and integrity that is really essential to our work. He brought his vision as an artist, his knowledge as an engineer, and his passion for the creative process. And as a consequence, we do have, as you suggested, we have a working gallery here in the city council chambers. But we also have Roger's work felt, I think, throughout the entire valley. For example, he was the leader in our grants program for a number of years, and fine-tuned that process in a way that not only made it available to a wide variety of artists, but encouraged a wide variety of artists each year to come to the City Arts Commission, make proposals for a grant, and then to be shepherded kindly but firmly by Roger through the process of applying a grant. Without Roger, we continue to do this work, but his stamp will be on the work for a long time to come. And we honor him tonight.
Okay, thank you, Michael, for those words. But that's not all. Well, I'll tell you what, for the... No, I'll continue to brag on you here, Roger. The people at Disney apparently recognized Roger's talents. And you spent some time at the California Institute, is that right?
Yes, I spent seven years there teaching, and I also helped set the school up. I designed the libraries and the bookstore. And I was also hired to teach photography there and set up the darkrooms, and then taught for a number of years.
And you were the chair of that department of photography, weren't you not?
Yes, I was chair of the photography department.
Okay, we have other things here, even like Saudi Arabia knows of you. In the airport there, you... Can you tell us a little bit about the Saudi Arabia Airport?
Yeah, it was way back in the 70s. And they wanted to do a solar project. And so I designed the space frame that went into it. It was actually a parking structure, about 88,000 square feet, and had solar energy that they were providing. Even though they have plenty of oil there, they were trying to do a poster project there to...
In the 70s?
Yeah, back in the 70s, yeah. So that was a very early solar project.
And then in Arizona, I spent a little time over there. I think everybody here knows about the biosphere and the idea of how do you... Can people live on the moon, what is in an enclosed area? You were involved with that?
Yeah, I designed the glazing system for that. It's the... At the time, was the world's largest airtight structure. There's some pictures right up here now showing some of that. It's about two and a half acres of facility there. And they sealed people in it for a two-year period.
You sealed them in, oh, that's...
Yeah, well, each one of the biospherians, as they called them, lost 30 pounds each. And they found...
You could write a diet book, you're right.
Yeah, right. But they also found that after a year, the oxygen level was dropping to the point of being at about 17,000 feet. And people were actually getting altitude sickness. And so what they proved is really how delicate the biosphere, like Earth is Biosphere One, this was Biosphere Two. And they had 18,000 different kinds of animals and species in there and trying to balance that. And they didn't quite balance. They actually did it for the two years, but they had to start putting oxygen into it.
Remarkable.
So it was an interesting project.
Okay, well, I guess without further ado, let me come down. We have a proclamation, and also I'll pick that up on the other side. Maybe would it be easier for Roger to come on up here?
Okay, sure.
What's happening? What's happening?
We don't know, it's a new one.
Are we all standing?
Right. Okay. Randy, you're good. You do my van and white? Here, why don't we put Roger in the middle?
That's... Go ahead. Yeah, move the chair, yeah, that's good.
Okay, here's a photograph, folks.
I want to be next to Roger.
This is my yoga teacher.
As long as you don't take my van and white.
There we go.
Couple more. Good, thank you very much.
It's getting close.
Smile, oh, that's much nicer. All move together, close, agree? Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, he comes in with super blocks. I've never met you before, because I came on just before you came on.
Right, I think I attended your last meeting. You were going out the door. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Randy. Thank you.
Thanks so much for everything you've done.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you for everything, Roger. You're wonderful.
Christine wants to say something.
Do you want to say something? Is anyone in the audience?
Yeah, I said, you don't give that, okay. Okay, well...
You've all left.
Sorry, Christine. Not fast enough, yeah.
Hello, Wendy Barker, Ojai Valley Museum Director. I'm here to say, number one, thank you very much for recognizing Roger. It's been just such a pleasure to work with him, really appreciate that. But the other thing I want to tell you about is this new book, two years in the making. Vastly... I don't want to say improved, but expanded with lots more information and lots more text. It's the Ojai Valley, an illustrated history originally by Patricia Frye. Over the last two years, Alisa DePute and Craig Walker have been working furiously to make this a really fabulous new book. And we have a free coming up book signing and author reception at Saturday, June 3rd, from 5:00 to 7:00. So people can come and talk to the authors and enjoy a couple of hours in the museum. The book is on sale now, $24.95. But it's a really great book, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Wendy. Okay, I have one, two, three, four cards here. Alistair? Who's Alistair?
Alistair Coyne, Upper Ojai. I just have a request for the council. There was a memorial on Saturday in Libby Park for Pat Weinberger. And I was going to suggest that the council may... Maybe you're already considering something. Consider creating a memorial for Pat Weinberger on some city property somewhere with a plaque. One suggestion that came to me was, you know, at the Y, where there is the firefighter's rock that she put there for the firefighters that protected the valley in 1985, there's space next to that, perhaps there could be another rock there. Somewhat smaller, that's a really big rock, with a brass plaque attached just outlining what she's done to preserve the Ojai. And for those that are in the audience or maybe at home that don't know what Pat did, I'll just give a one-minute synopsis. She stopped a freeway going on the Highway 150 route from Carpenteria to Santa Paula through Ojai back in the 60s and 70s. She stopped the four-laning of Highway 33 from Casita Springs into Ojai. She stopped five acres of gypsum... Five square miles of gypsum mines on top of Pine Mountain, which would have been trucked down through Ojai. And she preserved the watershed of Lake Casitas, which was at that point a zone for 10,000 single-family homes. And that's just some of the accomplishments. The video that was made of the memorial on Saturday is going to be posted on the Ojai Museum site on YouTube. So if you want to go to YouTube and see that memorial, you can hear all about her life in full. But thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Alistair.
And thank you, Alistair, for Saturday. It was inspiring.
Lenny? Lenny still here?
I'm on number two.
Oh, you're on two, okay. You're now on... Okay, I've got then Wendy? Okay, we got all the public comments then, so... Is there anybody else who wanted... Was Christine still here? Or she step out now? Okay, yes, sir.
Jimmy Bennett, you've got a card for me for public comment.
Well, for which? For the public comment?
Yes.
Okay, come on down. I don't think I have it, but it's... That's okay.
Mr. Mayor, Dennis Leary also, same thing.
Okay, Dennis.
I'll make this quick, I know everybody wants to go home. I'm the executive director, or actually the president of the Ojai Music Festival. I almost demoted myself there. We have a festival coming up in two and a half weeks. I'm here to invite everyone to come. We have seven concerts this year that are free to the public. And so there's no excuse when it comes to your pocketbook for not at least coming and sampling what has become... This is our 71st year, has become unique in the world. And that is, we have a festival that changes its music director every year. The music director this year is a gentleman named VJ Iyer, who won a MacArthur Prize two years ago, a Genius Award. And for the past two years, has won Downbeat Magazine's Musician of the Year Award. And every year, that musical director gets to work with... We'll have 35 events at the festival over a four-day period of time. Lectures, meals, concerts of all sorts. And the music director works with our artistic director and creates a four-day festival. It's rather remarkable. And I just urge you all, come and sample it. I mean, I'd like... I've got brochures here. If you want to buy tickets, we do have tickets for sale. And the tickets will begin to sell out in the next day or two. Certain events are very popular, and other events are less well-known. But I just urge you to consider it. And the people at home, I urge you to come and sample the wares at the festival. And we'll come back again. Councilman Blatts invited us to come back and talk about the Bravo Program last year when we came and talked about that. But we've got a very successful year of serving the children of Ojai as well. So anyway, I'll leave some brochures up here for the council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Okay, Dennis?
Good evening. Been a while since I've been here. I got the use of a card tonight, so I thought I'd drop in and basically say hi. I've... I've been kind of out of the politics for a while. I did run for council in 2006 and 2010. And I was a resident of Ojai for a few years. But right now, I'm not. I'm out on River Bottom. Stream by... Councilmember Francina out there on...
My daughter, otherwise I still think I don't live in the city.
Oh, you don't anymore, okay, oh, well. I stand corrected, okay. Oh, yeah, so anyway, I'm down there. So I'm not an actual resident of Ojai anymore. What I once was. So I just want to say something here now. This is not... I'm not intending this to conflict with your agenda item number two. It's going to be kind of related, but you can call... Make it a call, you can make the call. Now, I forgot what I was going to say. Oh, yeah. So here, my situation right now is that I'm a frequent visitor to Ojai, very frequent. Before I injured my leg here, I almost came almost every day. I hopped the trolley out there at the corner of the, you know, out there by La Luna and El Robla. It's a half an hour walk from where I live to there. So I want to put in a plug for the trolley. I mean, that is the most... One of the great things about Ojai, it's wonderful. And the staff, I mean, the drivers are just super. And it reminds me of something else here. I want to congratulate you, is it you? Yeah, with you, you and the Flow people for the victory, I guess. I understand it, great victory. So that's really something to be proud of. I mean, you could add that to the list of what Pat Weinberger did. And credit yourself, of course. So I am a frequent visitor. And I've also been a resident. And I come here very often, use the Ojai services. I really think Ojai is a super place. When I really did break my hip two years ago, I got great help in the hospital. Right now, it's just a muscle injury. But anyway, the final thing I thought I had here is that I might be in a... Give you a perspective on what a visitor might think about this situation, because that's what I am. And also, you know, like a former resident, so I'm neutral. I'm not saying... I may take... I don't know what I'm going to say. I didn't know this was on... Number two is on the agenda. But we'll see what comes up. I may have something to say. Thank you very much.
I have something to tell you.
Thank you, Dennis.
What's that?
Mr. Mayor, I have something important to tell him. I've been actually looking to tell you this. I don't know if you realize, you're famous. You're... There's a beautiful...
Did you say famous or infamous?
No, well, you're both. We all know that.
You better be careful.
But there's an article on the internet. It's called something like the 10 Top Small Towns in the United States. And it features Ojai right at the top, maybe third or fourth, I don't remember. But there's a photograph of you in front of Bart's Books. It's a fabulous photograph.
How do I search for it?
You... Well, if you could give the clerk your phone number or...
I don't have a phone, so...
Well, I don't... Just search "top 10 towns in Ojai." Eventually, you'll see your photograph. It's a fabulous photograph.
I hope they didn't put that other photograph, remember that? Anybody here?
No, no, it's you in front... You're promoting Bart's Books. It's really great.
It's not the one at the other... At the club, where I got all upset.
I don't know, but it's a good photograph.
I'm older and mellower now, I hope.
We trust you, you're a pirate, yes. Thank you. Okay. I think that covers that part. So we're on consent agenda... Oh, no, we have to approve the agenda. Shall we... Are there any changes in the agenda before we... Did you want to pull anything, or just to make some minor...
On the consent calendar, a couple of things I wanted to pull, yes.
Yeah, okay, we're worried.
We'll get to that.
Okay. Okay, so agenda stands as it was presented. We're now on the consent section, and Mayor Protem, you have...
Yeah, E and F, I have a comment and correction.
Okay, so E and F and...
And I have C, Mayor.
Okay, EF, or CEF, clerk? Those three will be pulled out, okay? Do we have a motion for the rest of the...
I move to approve A, B, D, and G of the consent calendar.
Okay.
Second?
You have a second, okay? Is there any objection? If not, so ordered. Okay, Bill?
Well, C is first, maybe?
Oh, okay, we'll do it alphabetically, Randy?
Mine's fairly quick, on page 1 of 13 at the top. It says, "He and Councilmember Blatts met with Pat McPherson of the Ojai Flow, and it was you and I." So just a change of Mayor Johnson and myself versus Councilmember Blatts.
Yeah, I wondered about that, too. I thought maybe that there was a separate meeting that I wasn't invited to. But that's why. Okay, so the clerk has that correction, and... Okay, Bill?
On E, yes, on page 1-43, page 5 of 7 of the Historic Preservation Commission minutes for April 13th, 2017. The motion from Atkins and Convery, seconded, refers to the entirety of the Libby Estate. I believe that probably should be the Smith-Hopson House City Hall, rather than Libby Estate. That's a motion about recommending landmarking. And it says to landmark the entirety of the Libby Estate, which includes the building, the barn, and other areas of the state as discussed, and take into account the historical report received and recommend to the city council that the entire estate be landmarked. It's under an agenda item for the Historic Resource Survey Report for Smith-Hopson House City Hall.
Oh, it is under Smith-Hopson?
Yeah. So I think that that motion is probably worded incorrectly. And it should be Smith-Hopson House City Hall.
I believe that's correct. Thank you for catching that. Since those are the minutes from the Historic Preservation Commission, my recommendation would be that we bring that change back to the Commission and ask them to consider making that correction.
Okay.
So I'd recommend that we just pull that tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure that was correct.
Yes, thank you for catching that for the record.
You have one other?
Yes, on item number F, on the Disaster Mitigation Plan, I want to make sure that it's consistent with our city code. And the reason I bring up the issue is that emergency plans are supposed to be, according to Section 3-1.08, emergency plans in the municipal code, are the responsibility for development of the Ojai Emergency Plan are from the Ojai Disaster Council. And the Ojai Disaster Council is chaired by the mayor, with the Director of Emergency Services being the vice chairman, which is you, the city manager, and also an Assistant Director of Emergency Services. I'm not sure if we have one. Although we do have that office, those two offices created according to municipal code 3-1.05. And the reason I bring this up is that we're being asked to approve this, even though it's supposed to be submitted to us from the Disaster Council, rather than just from staff. And also, the emergency manner is listed as the city manager's office, where in fact, the city manager is... Has a specific title in terms of the municipal code. And so I'm concerned that this wasn't handled exactly in compliance with the municipal code.
Okay, well, how about we go ahead? I mean, I would certainly waive whatever privileges the chairman of that has right now as the mayor. We can approve this, and then have the city manager check and be sure that this meets the standards for the county and the state.
Well, the one issue I have with that approach, Mayor, is that the Disaster Council that's supposed to be developing plans includes the mayor, the Director of Emergency Services, the Assistant Director of Emergency Services, chiefs of emergency services, and certain representatives of the community. So in just in terms of vetting, is it just staff that's looked at this emergency plan? Or I assume other members, as listed on the Disaster Council, have?
It's only staff.
Okay. So I just, you know, as a city council person, I'm not feeling comfortable approving something if it hasn't been vetted per the specifications in the municipal code.
Okay.
That's just my personal feeling.
I agree.
So what do you recommend?
I recommend that it not be approved tonight and go... Be done in compliance with the municipal code.
Don't we have some deadline or something that we're supposed to do something here by, what, July?
I think July 15th is the deadline on that, so we still have time. We could check the process and bring it back, if that's council's desire.
That's on the way, yeah.
Okay, so we're pulling two of the items, and you had one that you made the minor correction on. So we should have, I guess, a motion, that was for C. Is there a motion to...
A motion to approve C.
Okay, any second to the motion? Okay, any objection? If not, so ordered. Okay.
Mayor, can I just one last thought on the... Can we get a copy of the advisory board? Can you send us a list of who is on that?
Sure, you want a list of...
Of who presently is on it, so that council know who's actually reviewing this.
Sure, we'll get that to you.
Great.
You got it.
There's the code itself, if you wanted to look at it.
Great, thank you, Will.
Something else for you to do.
Thanks, Bill, if you're glad. I'm glad you caught that. Okay. Brings us to item number two, a discussion item. We have someone from the clerk's office, a certificate of sufficiency of petition.
I'm here to discuss...
Ah, Cindy.
Yes, ma'am, your certification of sufficiency is included in the staff report.
Okay, so everything's presented? Fine, thank you, Cindy. Okay, do we need a motion to accept or to file?
So the... Do you want me to speak to it?
When it says...
That's fine.
Receive.
So the council has a couple of options.
I don't know, the question is, is do we need to accept the report first?
At a minimum, we need to accept the report. The rest of it, you can do tonight or do it another night.
Yeah, okay.
One move, receive and file.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, moved and seconded to receive and file, any discussion? Okay.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wierich?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Okay, Matt, did you want to give the...
I'm happy to give a brief report of your options. And then I'd suggest before further discussion, you take public comments. I'm guessing you've got some cards. So the options are, as laid out in the staff report, with the clerk's certification of the referendum petition as having the minimum number of signatures, and as having met the formatting requirements of the Elections Code, the council's Resolution 1707 approving the Ojai Tours Improvement District is suspended. The council has two choices. Number one would be repeal the resolution in its entirety. And if so, then you cannot reenact a resolution imposing the same resolution or substantially similar for one year from the date you take that action. The second option would be to submit the matter to the voters. If so, there's two sub-options. Either at a special election called for the purpose at least 88 days from the date you call the election, or else at the next regularly scheduled municipal election, which is November 2018. Or, as always, in any issue, the third option is to decide that neither of those options is legally appropriate and litigate. Hence, the closed session discussion scheduled for the end of the agenda, if you wish to discuss the litigation options.
Okay, so that's what that language meant on the closed session?
Yes.
Okay.
And you've got, in terms of timing, the Elections Code requires that you receive, as you have just done, the report from the clerk at the first meeting after the clerk presents it. The Elections Code does not require, unlike initiatives, that you act tonight. Instead, the deadline is implicit as opposed to explicit. The deadline is to act at least prior to the... the next municipal election, rather, the date to call the next municipal election, which is 88 days before the November 2018 election, which works out to August, and it's in the report, there it is, which works out to August of 2018, is your last date to act for-
Be roughly the first week of August.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I knew I had it somewhere.
2018?
18, correct. Bear with me a moment.
Wait a minute, could you clarify that? Are you talking August of 2017?
No, 18.
2018, okay. So are you saying that if-
There it is.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, are you saying that if the council does not do anything, the OTID is suspended until that date?
The OTID is suspended until it is approved by the voters. The only way for the OTID to be reinstated is for the voters to approve it. With the submission of a valid referendum petition, the council lacks the power to approve it. But in terms of the deadline, it can't be, the council, if council decided not to submit it to a special election, then it would go to a, the next regularly scheduled municipal election, which is November 2018.
But could we not schedule a special election consolidated with the county June primary?
Certainly, you can schedule a special election.
So that's a third alternative within the, right?
Yeah, any, a special election would be any date you wish that's 88 days from the date you make the action, which could include the June primary in 2018, which would reduce the cost, as I understand from the clerk.
And that was my point. There are two ways in which to reduce the cost for the special election. Randy?
I just want to clarify, the OTID runs until November 17 of this year?
The present OTID expires October 31 of this year.
October 31, right. So if we take no action, it ends November 1?
If you take no action, it would end until the voters approve it.
Right.
If they approve it.
Okay, great.
Okay, do I have a motion, or are we?
No, public hearing.
I would suggest taking, it's not a public hearing, but you do need to take public comment. I'd suggest that before further discussion.
Okay, let's see. I've got a card. Lenny, did you say this was your topic? Come on up.
Good evening, Leonard Clay, 412 North Fulton Street. I think the first time I appeared at a council meeting, I said I've lived here for about five years. Now I can say I've lived here for nearly 30 years.
You are persistent.
You bet. And talking about persistence, as many of you know, I ran for city council on a number of occasions. And each time I ran, and each time I speak at council or at a commission meeting, it's with the same basic thrust, which is to preserve Ojai in line with our general plan, the special aspects that make Ojai so special. And what I wondered about every time I ran was the Montecito-ization of Ojai. And by saying that, I didn't mean Montecito literally, but Montecito as a metaphor for a community that is of, by, and for wealthy people. And slowly but surely, Ojai has become a community of, for, and by wealthy people. You look at the cars that drive down the street, you look at the merchandise in the stores, wine tasting bars and honey tasting bars and brew pubs and clothing stores with $20 socks. And the tourism bureau, as constituted, exacerbates that because they're going after wealthy tourists. Barcelona, Spain recently closed its tourism outreach board for the same reason that I believe we should, which is there are too many damn tourists. And I know, I'm on the Finance Committee, I know the importance of tourism to our economy, but at some point, it's the cart pulling the wagon, and we've reached that point. Initially, I did not sign the petition, and at some point, I realized that I was not signing it because I'd given up, that we've passed a critical point, and it's a town for wealthy people. But I was persuaded that I should not yet give up, and that there's enough stuff here worth preserving, and we should continue to fight to make what we have available not only to rich folks, but to everyone. And one way to do that is to get rid of that board, and if you're going to invite tourists, do so in a way that that's just not reaching all around the globe to get the wealthy from everywhere that they exist to come here. Thank you.
Thank you, Lenny. Sheri Ann Kate?
Good evening, Mayor Johnston, and Councilmembers Francina, Haney, Wirick, and Blatts. I'm going to be very brief for a change. As we all learned in high school, democracy is a representative system where our elected officials have been voted into office because we believe that they represent our values and our priorities. Clearly, 800 signatures by people who vote in the city of Ojai, collected over a period of a couple of weeks, is a clear indication of the voters' wishes. Now, the city council has another opportunity to show that it does indeed represent the majority of the voters in Ojai. If this is not the case, then despite our best efforts to be heard, the electorate can assume that some council members are representing their own personal opinions. Please listen to your constituents and honor the requests detailed in the referendum petition. Thank you for listening to the majority of the people in the Ojai community.
Thank you, Sheri Ann. Jay Simon?
Jay Simons, I live at 202 West Aliso Street, and I, like Lenny, have spoken a few times here, and I measure my years as 37 in Ojai, and I wonder where they go, but I wouldn't have spent them anywhere else. Anyway, the sufficiency of petition that we're discussing tonight, it really should be no surprise to anyone. At the meeting on March 28, when this was, this resolution was brought up and passed, there was a strong majority of residents who came and spoke and made their views known to you that said, "We are very concerned about the direction that Ojai is trending," and that we really thought that the OTID should be suspended, and let's really have a dialogue about the whole tourism stuff, the impacts, not just, of course, of tourism, but of our community in general, that needs to have an ongoing dialogue. So that was the basis for our contention at that point, that the OTID should be suspended. But now ponder this. Within the space of four weeks, the referendum petition was put together, and not a simple task, as you probably know. It was printed, distributed, signed, and submitted. And then in addition to that, we now have, it's been certified. And in addition to that, I can only say that during this process, it was very obvious that the public perception and the opinion is very much in favor of really protecting what we have here in Ojai. Okay, so there, you know, it isn't, I guess, we have, you know, 768 signatures, but of which 500 have been certified. There is a large group of our community members who really view this as a critical part. I mean, I know, I certainly do. So this sufficiency of voters, we're not anti-turists, we're not anti-business, but we're greatly concerned with the effects of excessive tourism. So we want an Ojai community that is not primarily a tourist destination, and we want our village to be a village and not a solving knockoff. So what we're really asking for is balance and a discussion. So, as you know, you have a choice here, actually, another choice, I guess, with the litigation aspects, but that wasn't really talked about too much. But you have the option of repealing the existing resolution and establishing this ongoing dialogue that I've talked about, where we hope to maintain the balance that we have, a vibrant business and tourist community, yes, but also something that really protects our core Ojai values that we're all very concerned about keeping. And the other is to spend, you know, 10 to 50,000 on an election, on a ballot, that I think will very much demonstrate, again, this sufficiency that I have discovered and seen in action and certainly feel. So I would urge you to do away with the existing resolution, and let's establish this ongoing dialogue.
Thank you, Jay. Michael Haley?
Good evening, everyone. Well, let me just start out saying, you know, I support removing the OTID. I'm not a supporter of the OTID. We've got so much advertising going on here already that I don't think that anybody's even going to notice the difference if we get rid of it this year. You know, and what the, I've heard so many different things. One thing I've heard is that they've got articles in Perry Match, you know, and a Realtor friend of mine said, in one day, she showed a house on the east side, people, investors flew over from Paris because they wanted to set up a wedding venue after reading an article that was put out. I mean, that's not Ojai. That's not what we want in Ojai. We're gonna, at the same time that we're having the music festival next weekend, there's going to be the wine festival, and that gentleman was speaking at the supervisor's meeting, I can't remember his exact numbers, but it was something like, it's about the fourth or fifth year, and he went from 400 people to 4,000 people. Last year, he had 10,000 people, and we're going to get 20,000 people. I mean, we're going to have Coachella here going on, and I just don't feel like we can handle it. We've already got way too much. And, but having gone through this for 12 years in Napa, as some of you know, it's not too late. It's not too late at all. You know, Lanny was saying, you know, he's getting hopeless. It's not hopeless at all. You know, I fought the same thing and lost in Napa, and it could get a lot worse. It could get a lot worse here than it is right now. And Ojai is very savable from this. I'm not against tourism. It's, we're at a kind of a nice level, if just somehow we could keep it at that and manage it better. And I also want to echo the comments that the process, you know, this thing just feels like it just got railroaded through. And people get really nasty with each other sometimes. It's not helpful. I don't like that. I don't want to participate in that. And the way around that is to have a dialogue, as he was suggesting. And I have a whole plan about how to do that, if anybody's interested. Maybe I'll write it up if they are. But we've got to have public meetings where you have professional people, traffic planners, tourism people, that come in, and you have a two-hour meeting, and people, instead of just getting a quick two minutes, you know, maybe some different groups pick representatives, and you have more of a debate. Not an angry fight, not insults, but a real dialogue and discussion of the issues. Because I do think that there's some level of advertising that possibly the community would support. But when you railroad things through like this, and nobody really gets any input, and everybody's shocked to find out that there's 200 articles in major magazines around the world advertising Ojai as a place where people go crazy over pixies and all this weird stuff, you know, people are just going to say, "Forget it," you know, and just react against it. So I'm confused about the process somewhat, about what you're going to exactly decide, but I just want you to know that I'm against the OTID, and we've really got to get better dialogue going here. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Tom Francis?
Good evening, Mayor Johnson and council. Again, thank you all for your service. I do appreciate you all for all the work you put in for our community. For me, this is really about balance. I'm for balance. I'm firmly convinced the community is for balance. And the overwhelming majority of the community believes that if continued, the OTID will throw our town out of balance. That's what they believe. I've had a multitude of conversations with people, many of them very brief, but probably more conversations with people on this topic than anyone in our town. So please, hear your community and end the Ojai Tourism Improvement District. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Dunn?
I'm Jerry Dunn. I've appeared before talking about the dangers of seeing a small town turn into a tourist town, and I'd like to just urge especially councilmembers Haney, Wirick, and Blatts to reverse their votes and repeal the OTID. It seems to many that you three often vote in lockstep, but only one of you needs to rethink this issue to avoid being remembered as the city council that looked the other way while Ojai turned into a crowded, generic tourist town. Suzha Francina summed it up perfectly when she said, "Preserving our town is the best thing we can do for tourism." I think it's time for you to step up, listen to the hundreds of your constituents, and rescind the OTID permanently. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Mary Dunn?
I'm Mary Dunn. Mr. Mayor and city council members, I want to thank Mr. Mayor Johnson and city council member Francina for listening to and respecting the many citizens who voted against the, who spoke against the OTID. Mr. Haney, Mr. Blatts, and Mr. Wirick, I speak for many others out of frustration. It appears you do not listen to the majority of speakers or consider the hundreds of our letters, but I do hope you will act on our petition. Do not sell Ojai soul for tourist dollars. Please acknowledge your constituents' voices and end the OTID. Thank you.
Megan Burquist?
I have, um, I might not go, and maybe later.
Dennis Leary?
Whatever happened to the reserved for next speaker?
What?
The reserved for next speaker.
Good question. I should have, I should have had Dennis come up earlier. Yeah, all right. I forgot about that. Thank you, Susan.
Okay, hi again. My thinking on this issue is all about our general plan that speaks over and over and over about small-town character. However, small-town character, when it comes to the economy, you've got two things, economy for locals or economy for visitors. Also, what is the future of our economy going to be in view of the larger political situation? For example, with Donald Trump coming in. So my general thought is that if we have cooperation early on on these issues, and also similar to what happened with the STRs, if we had cooperation between the conflicting parties early on, if, that's a big if, all right? And I think it's very possible, we could have solved our problems at the local level without going into, you know, at worst case, another legal battle. As far as wealth goes, the $20, Lenny said, you know, preserve Ojai, and he talked about wealth and the cart pulling the dragon. Is that dragon or wagon? Okay. Trump, right now, is all for wealth. He wants to make America great again, and he wants America to be wealthy, but he means- He wants to make America great again, and he wants America to be wealthy, but he means wealthy for everyone, everyone, in his speeches and so on. But does, we don't yet know who Trump is really is. Is he for the rich or is he truly a populist? We don't know. Yet, but the time will tell. Democracy and representation of the majority, I don't think that's a hard and fast rule because majorities can actually persecute minorities. So there's room for private judgment, not just the majority. And, and what else? Okay, 20,000 people coming to Ojai. Could that be worked with? What if you had all trolleys in service with outside parking somewhere? So I'm not, I'm basically neutral, but Ojai has a double mission regarding small-town character. Ojai has to find the balance, as Francis said, between, now I said a mission. Ojai, I believe, has a mission, which is outlined in the general plan.
Dennis, you have a red light, so can you wind it up?
Over twenty-two, okay. So, okay, four more words. We have to serve the visitors and the locals.
Right. Thank you. Peggy LaSara? Peggy here?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Johnson, members of the council, staff. I didn't prepare anything. I think I've made my opinions about the OTID known. I think it should be ended. I was willing to accept a lesser term, maybe one year, two years, and a lower percentage for the point of compromise, but since we've come to the realization that the majority of the people really don't want this to happen, at least that's the best guess that we have, I'm really happy for it to be ended. I want to apologize. I have been harsh. I was harsh with Paul Blatts. And at the same time, I want to acknowledge that, as Mary Dunn said, we're frustrated. And I think that the national climate has added to our frustration. There's a tendency for people with a lot of power to make cavalier decisions that affect people and, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't affect the menu selection of the people making the decision, and it determines whether or not other people are gonna eat it all. And so I ask you, in whatever decisions you make, to really sit back and consider the decisions that you're making from the, to the best that you can with a theory of mind of the individuals that are part of the community, contribute to the community in ways that maybe don't have dollar signs associated with them. And try to make the kindest decisions that you can make. I overheard that at Pat Weinberger's service, Mayor Johnson said that he thinks people should be nicer at city council. And I want people to be kind. Nice means without knowledge, and I want us to be smarter. I want everyone here to be smarter. And that doesn't mean you, we, I don't, I'll speak for myself. I don't expect that you know everything. I don't even expect that you know what you don't know. I do expect that you tap into expert opinions when you're making decisions about complicated topics and assure the population that you're doing the very best job you can to represent us. That's really what I think you're supposed to be doing there. There's not anyone up there that I wouldn't help if you needed help. I care about this town. I care about the people here, and I want you to care about us. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Okay. That's all the cards I have unless, oh, we got, famous last words. Okay, we got, John?
Yes. Mayor and council members, I just, this is just a quality of life issue. And we entrust that you are holding for us that our, the quality of life in this town, that you're going to hold that and vote on this, holding that. Because tourists are gonna come. I'm not anti-tourist and I'm not anti-business. I want, I go into these businesses. I use these businesses. I want them to survive and do well. And I think they will because people are coming to Ojai. I mean, Ojai is special. That's why we're here. And people are gonna keep on coming. But I think that OTID is not serving the quality of our community and the quality of life that we need in this town. Because if we lose that quality of life, it's hard to get it back. Yes, you can. You can see pictures of the San Fernando Valley that actually look like Ojai with the orange orchards. I don't know if you, sure you've seen them, but, you know, they can't go back there. And I'm not saying that, you know, but you understand the metaphor.
I grew up there.
Oh, then you know it. Okay. Well, so I just ask that you hold that quality of life for all of the town and hold the town's desire, because that's what we've entrusted you to do. Thank you.
Bill? Did you? We're not interrupting you, are we? Okay.
Jamie.
Right, yeah. Just trying to stand there a few minutes more.
On top of Bill.
For the record, Bill Miley, we've lived here since 1968. Raised my family here. Just as a pre-beginning, I've been involved with this discussion all the way back to December when we met at Sarasota Park, that meeting room there, bringing it up, I think, for the first time. So in summary, I believe that the council-community discussions we have had over the past three months have been good. Lots of testimony, lots of ideas, collection of facts, personal examples of negative and positive impacts, and examples of bitter tourist promotion and careful considerations of consequences we need to look at. It started at 10 years, went up to 2%, and ended at three years, 15%, with a budget for a traffic study, collection of information, and a voting spot on the program boards and the advisory board. So I was really satisfied with the compromise that happened on 3/28, and then the referendum came up. So I was asked to carry a petition, and this is what I respond, I responded by, with an email to the person, and I said this one particular thing, which was part of it. So an important point I made when responding to the request to carry the referendum, my understanding is that the entire council supported a limited renewal. The only difference at the time was three to two years and the assessment percent. And I know there was some discussion to begin with to do away with it. I did not see the vote as I went home after my speech and Channel 10 was dead. Later I viewed the entire tape. So I have an idea, which is hypothetical. If I were a member of the council and one of the three original votes that voted yes, I would do something like this. I know there have been a lot of energy expended on the subject of the renewal. So, one, considering that there are about 4,500 registered voters within the city, and considering that on the night of 3/28, when the council voted three to two to renew it for three years, one half percent with 15% for research, the live broadcast of our councils was dead. Nobody saw it. Considering that slightly more than 295 people viewed the tape as of last Friday, because the live broadcast was dead, and remember now, there are 4,500 registered voters, 200, 300, but saw the tape. I realize that this complicated issue needs a lot more clear information and discussion in order to decide what is best for our city. Therefore, if I were a councilperson, I would conclude that moving to rescind the 3/28 vote that recreates the OTID is best, considering the options that are presently available, which includes the referendum vote. And that we spend a year closely monitoring this, setting up an ad hoc committee, protocol, collect data, report to the city council at the end of the year, and bring it back on the agenda if appropriate. I like compromises with good principles and time to work them out. I don't like the idea of a referendum which will shut off options that potentially have value to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Is it Mancy? Is that, am I reading this correctly?
Marissa.
Oh, Marissa, okay.
They both tried.
Yeah, Marissa, I just couldn't read it. Very good. Marissa, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor and council members. So about, I would say about 10 years, my name is Marissa Vega. I would say about 10 years ago, I can be in a group of people and mention Ojai, and few of them would know where Ojai was. Now, when I mention Ojai, it's like, oh, yeah, Ojai. We love Ojai. It happens quite a bit. From what I understand with the OTID, because I'm pretty much on the periphery of living in this town, I'm, I mean, I'm more reclusive, but from what I understand is that this, the purpose of the OTID was to fill the hotel rooms. What it's doing instead is raising our rents. From what I under, from what I've heard, the cabins over at Mallory Way, most of those rents have been raised. Our Akito Dojo, that's been in our community for 15 years, is now having to move because their rent has been, is being raised 50%. So that's one thing it's doing. It's also driving our families out of, out of Ojai, and it's increasing our Airbnbs in residential areas, which is also breaking up our sense of community. So once again, I'll stand here and say that I oppose OTID. OTID. Thanks.
Thank you, Marissa. Jamie Bennett?
I did come to invite you to the Ojai Music Festival, not to speak on this topic, but since I'm here. I came 35 years ago as a tourist, fell in love with Ojai, six years ago bought a home here and have subsequently become the head of the Ojai Music Festival. We have no budget for advertising. It may seem strange, but you won't find ads for the Ojai Music Festival. The importance of public advertising of Ojai as a destination is very important to us. We can reach out to our audiences, but they need more than one impression, more than one letter from us. And so the reinforcement of public relations, which is done by the OTID, is important for us to be able to bring an audience here. I moved here and live here because of the diversity of the cultural things that take place in the city of Ojai, because of the music festival. It's one of the reasons I moved here. One of the reasons I moved here is the playwright's conference, the tennis tournament, all the things that I go to in this town, which are, which can happen because we have tourists. The truth is, without a gate, without, without public coming to these events, you know, they won't exist. You know, we operate on a very thin margin, and as you all know, we don't have, we don't have an NEA apparently next year. And we got $25,000 from NEA last year, we'll have zero. So I don't know where I'm gonna fill that hole. And it's a very, all of these cultural things that we all benefit from and we all talk about as being important to Ojai, all operate on a fine margin. So I just urge you, I am thankful to Councilman Wirick and Haney and Blatts for their willingness to be flexible at the, at the meeting, which I thought they voted for, and I thought actually everyone voted for. I thought there was a compromise. I thought that, that the council, and it's interesting to hear that it wasn't broadcast or taped, but I think that, that you came up with a good compromise. It was not a significant increase over what's been there, but I can tell you that what, the money that's being spent right now supports all of those things which we see as important in Ojai, and I urge you, urge you not to destroy that.
May I ask the speaker a question, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Do you know how the Ojai Music Festival promoted itself before the Ojai Tourism Improvement District was formed?
No, I don't.
Okay. There must have had some budget for advertising. There must have had some way, because I used to, I've attended the festival for many years and the bowl was, the bowl was filled.
It's 71 years old, so what I can tell you is the costs go up. Costs of everything go up, obviously. And at the moment, we run very, very tight, and we don't have an advertising budget at this point in time. So we rely on that. And I know that things like the playwright's conference and other things which add to the dimension of this town, the fact that we have as many restaurants as we have, isn't it wonderful to be able to go out and go to any one of 27 restaurants in the town? Well, you take the, you take the tourists out of there, and we, we benefit from that, all of us who live here. And it really disturbs me to hear people, you know, throw out, you know, I don't want this town for wealthy people, you know? We don't need class warfare here. We have poor people, we have wealthy people.
Okay, just answering.
I just had a simple question. Thank you very much.
And an observation, for 65 years, it's been extraordinarily successful without a promotional district. Butch, by the way, we legally cannot use the money for that. That's a, supposed to be an incidental or secondary benefit, but I recognize it is, and we value the tourists we have. I don't think they'll be taken out, but I've said that before, stated that before. Okay, I guess we, I won't, I won't have the famous last words again. Okay, we're done with the comments. I have no more cards. My understanding is we fundamentally have three choices. The matter can be repealed or rescinded, and I presume that's by those who voted in favor of the motion.
No, the question now is proposed to the entire council. The usual rules for reconsideration of motion do not apply in referendum. It's a new question for the full council.
Okay, so that motion, okay, so we could repeal the, the action, we could set an election, or we could do nothing, ignore it.
Mr. Mayor, I have, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
Okay. I want to make a motion to allow the Ojai Tourism Improvement District to expire in the fall, you know, October 30th, and repeal the previous vote to approve the Ojai, the OTID. That's my motion, and I'd like to explain my motion if I can get a second.
Okay, we have a second? Okay, I'll second the motion. Proceed.
Thank you. Okay. This referendum signed by almost 800 residents represents the overwhelming community support for ending the Ojai Tourism Improvement District. That is my distinct impression. I've, I've also spoken with probably, you know, as I go about my daily life and I shop locally, I meet people in line. They're always thanking me for voting to put the brakes on this. I have here about approximately 200 letters opposing the Ojai Tourism Improvement District, all of them emphasizing that they're not against tourism. They recognize, they want a balanced town, as Tom Francis said. I want to remind the council and our audience that a vote to allow the OTID to expire is not, as I was starting to explain, a vote against tourism. On the contrary, it is a vote to, a vote to end, or to, it may turn out to be just a simple one-year pause where we have dialogue, where we have expert, traffic experts, and people who know, you know, where we have someone who can assess what's really happening in our small town. A vote, this is really a vote, if we, if we repeal the previous vote, what we are saying, in my opinion, is that we want to preserve what tourists who return year after year come to Ojai for. We want the kind of tourists that comes back. We used to have that kind of tourist. We don't want to be known as a wine and beer destination where you come for the day. We want to go back as much as possible because Ojai is an internationally recognized community of cultural, artistic, and spiritual significance. We are a small town set in a unique sacred valley. We are a small town set in a unique sacred valley where the residents for decades have fought very hard to preserve our natural surroundings. We are a unique valley. Krishnamurti, who traveled the world, called this the most beautiful valley on earth. He said that numerous times in his writings and his books. We are, we, we have a long reputation as a place, as a healing place. We have a long history. If we preserve that, the tourist industry will take care of itself. If we destroy it, we'll need more and more funding to bring tourists into what we've destroyed. We'll be like any other town, we'll become a solving. I think I've already stated that the vast majority of the letters I've received, and I did receive letters from business owners who fear that if we don't fund this, that their business will go down. I think those fears are unfounded. I think there are many reasons why businesses fail, and if we're headed for a recession and other things happen, it doesn't matter how much funding we pour in, you know, we have to ride those kind of things out. As Michael Haley and other speakers said, we have multiple events now that bring in thousands and thousands of people. The new Topa Winery is advertising like crazy. All the things that Jamie mentioned do their own advertising. We're in the age of the internet. We're in the age of short-term rentals. Ojai is everywhere. In previous meetings, Peggy LaSara, I think she got how many million hits, you know? And he, and, you know, I, we, the council received a letter from a council member, William Wirick, who I have great respect for, who sent us a letter saying that if we did not, I have the letter right here, don't look so puzzled, stating that without the Ojai Tourism Improvement District, he, you stated that we lose control of our valley. And I think just the opposite is true. That's what it says. It says so right here. Here, pass it to him. Okay.
It's okay. I'll take your word for it.
Okay. It went to everybody. Am I the only one who read it?
No, I read it.
Okay. I believe that we are losing control of our destiny, most especially when we start marketing Ojai, as, we start branding Ojai, as, as, in many ways, including a beer and wine destination. In my opinion, here's the truth of what happens if we stop funding the OTID. The truth is that the right to advertise is protected by the First Amendment as free speech. And we can't, advertising is out of our control anyway, with or without the OTID. Anybody can advertise as much as, as they want. People can band together. The wonderful, the, the website that the Visitors Bureau has created, that can remain, and it can become a real, a real website. It could be more inclusive, not just Chamber of Commerce members. All this city council is doing by repealing the vote to approve the OTID is it gives us time to assess how well the funding is working and take control of our destiny. There, you know, all we're saying is, don't, you know, don't, we're not pumping money through the city for advertising. We don't, you know, it gives us a, if, if, if I'm wrong in, in my predictions, a year from now, we can, when this runs out in October, we can renew, we can start, we can renew the OTID. And this business of saying that you have to keep doing it, that's not true in the age of internet. That advertising is out there, it multiplies on its own every single day. So in closing, I urge my council members who voted to approve the OTID to please reconsider their vote. The destiny of Ojai is in our hands. Thank you.
No applause and no boos, we hope, okay? Yes, Bill, you're on.
Yeah, I want to just, I want to read into the record exactly what I stated as a public record to my fellow councilpeople, because, you know, rather than characterizing, I want to read exactly what I said. All, I, I attended this EDC VC meeting, I attended the Economic Development Collaborative Meeting, where representatives from all over the county were going on and on and on about how they were going to be putting in additional tourism promotion for Ventura County, and they were going to be leveraging Ojai, whether we liked it or not. And it disturbed me, it upset me, because we need to manage our impacts. And this is what I stated in the, in my communication, I want to read it into the record. I attended this EDC VC meeting. It is clear that West County is going to be promoting tourism, inclusive of using Ojai as a major driver of noncoastal Ventura County tourism, whether we manage impacts at the city council level or not. We need the tools to manage these impacts. The referendum, if successful, would take away those tools and remove all oversight from activity that's going to happen with or without us. And that is a concern that I have. We need to manage impacts, not bury our, our head in the sand about it. So, again, my mind's not made up, but I expressed that concern, I want to read it into the record, because I am concerned about doing away with tools as opposed to using tools. And again, I'm not going to vote for this motion because we have information to share in closed session, and I think the first responsibility of, of an elected official is an informed decision. I want to make very clear to the community that I will oppose vehemently delaying a decision of what to do as a council, but we need to have full information on making that decision, and we have not shared that information yet, so this is not the time to pass this.
Other comments? Okay, well, the chair may now speak, according to protocols. Bill, I understand the desire to control this and to have the tools. I don't see how we are prevented from having the tools, it's sort of a question of where the money comes from. The, I, I understand even what Jamie's saying about liking this, it's not, the, the idea of the OTID is not specifically for the purpose of all the rest of us to benefit, it's supposed to benefit the hotels. My concern has been that I hear hoteliers come in and say they don't have adequate occupancy, and then at the same time, when you ask what the occupancy rates are, well, that's proprietary information, and they generally don't share it. Then you hear from the merchants, they're not happy, they're not selling enough. Then you hear from all of many people here, the citizens, they're not happy because there's, they believe there's too much. Something is wrong with the business plan. I don't believe, whether we have an OTID or don't have an OTID, that it's beyond our ability to have the tools to start working on this. But my feeling is, is that, you know, the old thing, the rule of holes, when you find yourself in one, quit digging. In this case, it's a matter of, you know, and I, I hesitate to use the analogy of Airbnb, the air mattress, which is where Airbnb started, and the reason they have the name, the idea, I think most of us have been convinced that a blow-up mattress for your family and friends who come to visit you in the living room is a really great idea. My experience has been that the first time it was okay, and the second time, when I drag it out of the closet, I got a hole in the mattress, and the harder I blow the mattress, it never becomes firm, and the hole gets bigger. And that's kind of what I think we will be doing if we don't take a pause and try to figure out, you know, what is happening to us and what kinds of things can we do? Like Bill says, we would, we should try to be in control of this. But we don't have a right to tell anybody they can't advertise. Many of the people who testify have a right to advertise, but basically, they, in a way, including the festivals, are what they call free riders. Other people are doing the advertising, and they benefit. Well, that's great. I have been a free rider myself in my time. But I don't think that that should be the basis for the decision. I think that we need to figure out what we're going to do. I don't think at the, at Mr. Stensley's, you know, conference on tourism, you bet they're going to use Ojai in this county to drive it, and they don't have to use Ojai to drive it. Ojai is driving it. I had an experience recently, talking with one of our leading citizens, when someone wandered in their shop, and they were old friends, and in the course of the conversation, the person who wandered in was raving about how, they don't know why they don't come up here more, it's like stepping into a different country, a different world, they just, you know, were ecstatic over it. So I finally, I kind of sidled into the conversation, I said, where are you from? They said Thousand Oaks. So, my, my point simply is, we are unique. And somebody made the comment, which I think is a, was a good one, because in, in most discussions or issues, they usually tell you in a training session, you need to boil it down to a bumper sticker, if you can, what's your point? And I don't know if it was Jerry or somebody, but someone during testimony said, are we a community or are we a commodity? Now, we can be both, but I had people send me emails over the commodity idea, and they were business people here, and they said, I'm in business, if I sell more than I can deliver, I, I reduce or destroy my brand, and I think we need to be concerned about the brand. So I think it's, it's not to be against tourism, and frankly, I'm like Lenny and other people, I get to that hopeless stage too, where I think, have we already tipped over? But, you know, as Ralph Nader once said, you know, what function is despair? You know, there isn't any, that's giving up. So I think, you know, we're going to have plenty of people still coming to see us. I know there's an argument that says, well, you don't want to lose your momentum, but if you don't control your momentum, you destroy what it is you're trying to promote, and I really do fear for that, because I don't go anyplace now. I, I came here years ago, and everybody, the usual routine, you're from Ohio? No, I'm from Ojai, you know? That has been many years since people have made that mistake, and now, nobody makes it. They say, just whatever the person who testified, they say, oh, I love your town, you need more restaurants, though, it's really cool. You know, well, we got something like 40 places you can go out to eat, you know, and we got a lot of nice places, but if you want more than that, you go to Manhattan or someplace, you know, where, so, okay, well, I've ranted far enough.
May I make just one, one more comment? The greatest contributor to the occupant, the transient occupancy tax is the Ojai Valley Inn and possibly the Oaks Hotel. And in any case, the Ojai Valley Inn has its own, what do you call it? Marketing department, and they will continue to market Ojai just as much as they always have, and, and the free, and the free benefits from that will continue. And that's just one example of marketing that will definitely continue.
Okay. Anybody else? Paul, go.
Yes. I think after hearing my, my fellow council members, it's important for me to explain the rationale behind why I voted for three years, but it's also important to realize that it was a unanimous vote. If it had been passed for two years, two people voted for two years and three people voted for three years. So there was, it was a unanimous vote to continue the OTID amongst all of us up here. And all of us heard everybody's concerns that we're here, and yet, all five of us, duly elected, voted to continue the OTID. I've lived in this community for 34 years, and there's always been tourists here, always. I told the story the night that we voted, that the first thing that my real estate lady told me was, Ojai's a great place, but don't go downtown, this is 34 years ago, don't go downtown on the weekends, because there's so many tourists. And it's kind of, as I also said, Yogi Bear's old saying, nobody goes there anymore, it's too crowded. So, in looking at this, and I can appreciate everybody's position that says, do not continue with this. But the vehicle that we put into place, put into place a vehicle for us to really do some definitive studying on the effects of Ojai, without the speculation that either I put on it or you put on it, as to what's going to happen. We took 15% annually out of the budget to vote Ojai to spend on studies to see exactly what it's doing for Ojai, and I think that's really important. Our general fund can't afford to do that. The other thing is, is I hear about my constituents, well, my constituents, along with all of you that are my constituents, there's more of them that are telling me they want to have the, the Terrorists Bureau renewed than there are all of you people in this room telling me you don't want it done. I represent all of you. So I have to take what I have gleaned out of our community in trying to keep it a great place to live for 34 years, and having been on the council for as long as I have, coupled with what everything you've said, and what everybody that is outside this chambers has said. And quite frankly, there's a lot of people that have said a lot of things that are concerning to me about the petition, about what they were told before they signed the petition. We're not going to get into that, because we only have a couple of choices here. But I had lots of people come to me and say, I didn't know the city was spending $1,500 a day on tourism, thinking it was coming out of our general fund. Where'd you hear that? Oh, the guy that I, that told me that when I signed the petition. And that's more than one person. In fact, it was several people told me that. You know, somebody mentioned the, the Wine Festival. I've been a member of the Ojai Rotary Club West for over 30 years. I've been the chairman of the Wine Festival in the past. I'm currently on the Wine Festival Committee. We have done that Wine Festival for 30 years. It started off in Soul Park with 400 people coming, and over 30 years, it's gotten to about 4,000 people. And guess what? We've increased our advertising revenues over the last five years by about 30%, and guess what? We don't get any more than 4,000 people. But guess what we might have gotten if we hadn't done that? Maybe we would have gotten less than 4,000. And that Wine Festival generates $80,000 a year that we, as a service club, give back to the community. So I have, I am not convinced at all that by spending more money on the OTID, that we're going to get more tourism. I, before I, before I settled down into a, into being a general practicing lawyer, I did advertising for 17 years in the major arena and stadium industry. Some of the projects that I worked on were 20 and $25 million. Most of my advertisers were Coca-Cola, Pepsi, and back in the day, Philip Morris and other cigarette manufacturers. I can tell you, they spent more money just to keep their own market share. Every year, they spent more money hoping to just keep what they already had. So what we did on the night that we voted for this, what came to us was a 10-year renewal. I made a motion to cut it in half to five. And then it got cut to three, and I could support that. If that's not a compromise, cutting back 70% of what they asked for, I don't know what is, and it had nothing in there about the money to allow us to study, and to look at it and study it realistically, as to what impacts it's having. And three years from now, then we'd look at it, we'd have the studies done, and we really could make an educated guess as to what impacts it's having on Ojai. So that's the reason I supported it. We have a closed session this evening, if one of, if Councilwoman Sues's vote or another vote doesn't pass, and I don't know if there's other options that we have, but I think tonight, it's a little premature for me to vote for anything until I've had an opportunity to speak with council and see what else there is. But I don't want Ojai overrun with tourists, it's the last thing I want. I don't want it to turn into, somebody said it was going to turn into a tourist trap. Well, I don't know about that, I think Coney Island is a tourist trap. I don't want, I don't want it that way, believe me. And I'm not voting for this OTID to make it that way.
Mr. Mayor, may I just clarify what Councilmember Blatt said about our vote? So for the benefit of the audience, I think you said that we voted for the three years, or, you know, that we voted for this, or that we indicated that we are in favor.
He said it was unanimous to extend it.
Yeah. What, what Mayor Johnny and I wanted, the two years was our compromise, because that would take it to the next election, and that was our bottom-line compromise. What we really wanted was not to, to continue it at all, just, I just wanted to make that clear.
Right, and there were several votes on, on that motion, all of which went down three to two, and I did, I thought I explained it, Paul, that the difference between two and three is the city election when four of us are up for reelection, allowing that to act in effect as a referendum. And I, I believe that's on the record, that that was my, my position, because I was trying to find some middle ground. It was 1%, now 1 and 1/2, and it was to extend it for two years, thereby whoever, whomever the, you know, who, whom, I have to give my wife the English teacher. whoever, whomever the, I have to get my wife the English teacher to check me on that. Anyway, when, after the voters voted, and whoever is on the next council, they would have an opportunity to steer this in maybe a different direction if necessary. I'd like to, you know, just make some comments, just for clarity. The original request was ten years and two percent, Paul's correct on that, but to Scott's credit, after hearing everybody, he modified, from the chamber, he modified the request, and when it was presented, the request was now five years at one and a half percent, and that was the motion that Paul supported. Susan and I did make one more stab at it, and then we tried to figure out a way for us to avoid what's happening right now. We've always had tourists, but we haven't always had an OTID. People say, well, yeah, but it's really helping. I'm sure it's doing something, but I don't think it's doing what we had hoped that it would do. If you look at the amount of money that's being collected by the city, it actually has increased a little bit over what it was before the recession, but if you also look at the trends, it fairly closely tracks the recovery of the economy, so we really don't know what would have happened had there not been one. But we have had four years, and going on the fifth year, of doing this, and we do see, at least I do, I walk the town regularly, and I see a substantial increase in traffic, and I'm wondering why is it that the merchants and the hotels aren't happy with that? Because the people in the neighborhoods are less happy with it, and therein may lie the answer, because when I brought this up before, Scott Eicher, when he and I talked in the public hearing, he pointed, well, that's certainly one of the explanations, the short-term rental issue. So we, as a council, need to address that in some fashion. I think there are two really existential threats to the community, and they're connected. One is the OTID of overselling the product and damaging it, and the other is the short-term rental thing that's not under control. I think these are things that the general population of our community should be weighing in and voting on, not us trying to figure it out, because everybody up here has a good reason for why they voted the way they did and what they believe, but it's the people who live here, I think, that should be making that decision. So while I was trying to find a way to get it to the next general election without doing irreparable damage to the community, I don't think it's accurate, even though I know the campaign spin is, well, everybody voted for this, why are you picking on the three? Well, because the three carried the day, and they carried the day, because somehow three was, three years was better than two. The idea that the general fund can't afford this, well, I'll use the expression, nonsense. The general fund can afford it, it's just not the greatest way in the world to spend money, but it's certainly a better way to spend money than a number of things that we do that we don't have to do, because this is next to water, the most important thing we have to deal with. So I don't think if we don't have an OTID, that doesn't mean we can't still do the traffic studies and do a lot of the things that need to be done, instead of having OTID and the chamber having to do it, maybe we, as a council, during the budget, we have to accept that responsibility, because it's that important. There was a concern about the legitimacy of the petition. There's always some, you know, concern about all petitions, but I would submit to you, as one person, when I asked them if they understood what they were signing, because I hadn't seen the petition that had been circulated, they said, well, I'm not sure I fully understood it, but even if I was tricked, I was tricked into getting to vote on it. Okay, so that was, the idea that the petition is invalid, I guess, is maybe what somebody wants to discuss, but it clearly is an expression of where we are. When I hear that we're not concerned that the OTID will bring in more people, then I say, well, then, we shouldn't be all that concerned if we don't have an OTID. You know, I assume that what is meant by that, though, is, is without the OTID, we won't even hold our place, and we'll fall back. I don't think the facts show that, so, anyway, if anybody else got something to say, fine, otherwise, we should vote.
One shortcoming, you kind of, I think, threw STRs in there about, that should be, you know, we've taken, I agree with you about the existential threat of the STRs, I mean, obviously, I was one of the key people that caused that to happen, in terms of enforcing our current zoning, but I think that's a good example of, that's not something you do by vote. I mean, we certainly take the position by vote, by the vote of the people, in terms of the officials they want to take a position on that, but in terms of getting the enforcement done, in terms of implementing it and making it happen, that's our putting resources and pushing staff to do it.
I agree with you.
It's not something can be done by vote.
Right, well, okay, the reason I bring up the short-term rental, is that I know Paul was quoted as saying that this is, how did you say, Paul, self-regulating, and under many circumstances, that's true. The economy is self-regulating, if you believe in, I think they call it creative destruction, which means that somebody wipes somebody else out and gets a better product, which is always praised by those with the better product, and not so much by the person who got wiped out. In our case, we're the product, so, I agree with what Bill just said, and I think we have to get serious about what we're going to do, because if we did plug that hole in the air mattress, then maybe what Paul said would work, that it could be self-regulating. But right now, none of that is true, and it looks like we're living with the consequences of it, so, okay, anybody else want to talk, or we want to vote? Okay. Call her on.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatt?
No.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
No.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
No.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to move that we have this discussion of the city council's action with respect to the, this referendum put on the next council meeting, and at that point, we will have more information, and I will certainly have more information in order to make a decision. That's my motion.
Second.
We have a second. Discussion?
So basically recommending that we continue the discussion to the next meeting.
Yes, I do not want to delay or procrastinate, but I want to make sure I have full information for a decision.
Okay, I support that.
I'll support it, yeah. Okay, roll call. Does anybody else want to weigh in? Okay, go.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatt?
Yes.
Okay. We have a status report, number three. Do we have any, no cards on number three?
Can we have a, can we have a two-minute break?
I think she wants a plumbing break.
A two-minute break?
Will take a break while the room, those who want to, the hall, a comfort break.
Yeah, exactly.
On city community development department contracts. And, okay, we have a staff report of some sort?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was requested at the last regular council meeting that staff come back with a report on two of the contracts the city currently has. These are the contracts with Sites Pacific and Charles Abbott Associates. Sites Pacific currently provides contract services to the city's planning department, and Charles Abbott Associates provides contract services for the city's building division, including the building official, building inspector, and also for a contract code enforcement officer. In the staff report, we gave an overview of the current staffing in the community development department. It is a mix right now of full-time, part-time, and contracted positions. We did add additional clerical position in the last year to help support the community development department. We also hired a full-time, or excuse me, a part-time associate planner to help manage the workload. And as a side note, we are continuing to recruit for an assistant or an associate planner full-time, and once we were able to get that person onboard, the idea would be that we'd be able to reduce the contract services by a like amount. I'll start by going into some of the details about the agreement with Charles Abbott Associates. The contract began on October 1st, 2016, and it runs for one year, so through September 30th of this year. As I stated, it, the contract requires they provide highly trained staff, including a part-time building official, part-time building inspector, and then we also exercise the option of contracting, as I stated, for the part-time code enforcement officer. The contract does have some flexibility in terms of being able to ask for additional services or additional staffing. Should also note that the, Charles Abbott is also providing the staffing for the building appeals board, and they have facilitated to date four meetings with the building appeals board. Early on in the process, or I should say, not too long after the, Charles Abbott had come under contract with the city, we went to them with a need and a desire to be able to expand our inspection and our counter service hours. I'm happy to report that, I probably don't have the date here in front of me, but beginning several months ago, we implemented Friday inspection hours and also Friday counter hours. That is something new. We'd not had that since the city had expanded, going back from its four-day work week schedule to a five-day work week schedule. So that's something new that we're able to achieve under Charles Abbott. So far, we think that generally, they've been providing very good service to the city. I'll share a couple of additional things that they've been working on a little bit later on. They've been helpful with, I think also helping us get up to speed with ensuring that we're meeting the regional water quality control board standards. That was one area that they found that we'd been a little deficient in the past, and so we appreciate their assistance with that. Briefly, I want to touch on the code enforcement services. In the RFP that was put out by the city, we identified an optional element M for code enforcement services, and that was exercised by the city council, and that's currently at sixteen hours per week. Just, not to get into it here, but do note that we're proposing an increase in that as part of the budget process, but we can get into that when we talk about the budget later on, or at a subsequent evening, I should state. Since they've been doing the code enforcement services, they've investigated forty new complaints while closing thirty-one cases. They've also investigated and referred several cases to the city attorney, issued one compliance order and two administrative citations. I want to note that the code enforcement officer through Charles Abbott Associates is not providing the code enforcement for the short-term rentals that is actually being handled through the contract with Sites Pacific. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. Sites Pacific, as I stated, they provide the contract planning services, land use planning, et cetera. They provide a lot of flexibility to us in terms of being able to meet the day-to-day needs of the planning department. The current acting director of community development came through that contract. The most recent agreement was entered into in January of 2015. We brought that back to council, as you recall, in the spring of last year, and adjusted the fee schedule in April of 2016. That agreement continues indefinitely until canceled by one of the parties, and gives a specific fee schedule for the various planners that we employ. I think the service in general that we get from Sites Pacific is excellent. The current contracted individuals who we have here are very familiar with the city's codes and the culture of the community. They've been with us now for several months, and I think they've fit in very well. We've had some other individuals through the contract that were not quite as good of a fit with us, and we were very fortunate that we were able to work with Sites Pacific to find individuals that really worked and met the city's needs. Wanted to note again that the Sites Pacific is handling the code enforcement follow-up work on the short-term rentals. We felt that that's a little different type of work than your traditional code enforcement responding to, you know, whether it be signs or issues or things like that in the community. Required a little bit more of a computer-based and a methodical approach. Also have, that contractor has worked very closely trying to track in the complaints that we received from the community, and we think we've been, again, with the tools that we have, we think that we've been making some good efforts there in recent months. To date, we've issued forty-nine compliance letters as part of the short-term rental effort, fourteen cease-and-desist letters, and seven administrative citations. They are also currently monitoring the internet and other active cases, and right now they're watching thirty-nine non-active cases to make sure that those do not come back online or begin advertising again. As I stated, I think both contracts are beneficial to the city in terms of the flexibility and the professional staffing that they provide. If we need more services, we can request them. If the city no longer has a need for those services, or we're able to reduce that need, we have that option to do so. It's much easier to do that with contract services than it is with full-time or even part-time staff. Terms of the cost overview, a little difficult to compare apples to apples, year to year, since the level of activity going through the department does change. But we totaled up what we had paid Sites Pacific in 2016 and what we're projecting this year. There is an increase in what we're projecting paying out to Sites Pacific in the previous fiscal year. We paid out just about, just over a hundred and eighty thousand, and so far this year it's projected to increase to about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. In the prior fiscal year with the building contract, Stewart Consulting, we had spent two-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand dollars, and so far for this year, we're on track. We had a few months with Stewart in this fiscal year, which is why we have the thirty-four thousand, three fifty-seven for this fiscal year from Stewart Consulting. And then we're projecting for the remainder, so this would be from when Charles Abbott came on in October 1st through the end of this fiscal year, we're projecting their total cost to reach a hundred and fifty-four thousand. So if you add that up with the time that we had from Stewart at the beginning of the fiscal year, it's projecting about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in total costs, which is, as you can see, a rather significant reduction from what we had paid in the previous fiscal year. So that's about seventy-eight thousand dollars of projected reduction in costs.
Are these budgeted numbers, or are these expenditure numbers?
These are expenditure numbers.
How much did we budget this year for two-seventeen?
Boy, it's broken down under several divisions, so I can get that number for you, but I don't know if I can pull it off the top of my head, or if you give me a moment, I can pull it out of the budget.
No, it's okay. I just, I'm curious, was the appropriation reduced in this year's budget, or is it?
We are, yes, we are, there is a reduction.
Okay, so this is not just underspending the budget, it's, has had a smaller budget, is that right? My, my question is, is let's say if you budgeted five-hundred thousand dollars and you project four-thirty-eight, then there is a savings, but if you only budgeted four-hundred thousand and it's four-thirty-eight, then it's over expenditure.
Right, 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 yeah, I understand what you're saying. I'll have to pull that up in front of me in terms of the actual comparison of the budget. I understand the question now. You're right, we were simply just comparing the expenditures from the one year to the next, and we didn't cross-reference that with the budget, so we will do that. So again, I think we're, feel like we've gotten really good services from both contracts. I mentioned in here a little bit about the training and development that we're working on, that continues to be a goal of the city. I know one issue that has come up had to do with the, with the permit tracking software, and I just want to make that perfectly clear for the council and the public. When Charles Abbott Associates came onboard, part of their proposal was they said that they could provide a tracking system for the city. We declined that offer at that time because we were already moving forward with another vendor, Exela, to bring in a system with the city. I'm not sure that I would make that same decision today, but that was the direction that we had already moved, and we had already invested some funds into that system. So I just want to make it clear that that was a decision that was made by the city staff and was not a refusal by Charles Abbott to provide that, and, nor was it necessarily a, we did not see that as a mandatory part of the contract. Charles Abbott has indicated to us that if that was something that the city wanted to pursue, that they would certainly be willing to have this, that discussion with us.
So did, is Exela delivered?
Except, we are working with Exela right now.
But they haven't delivered yet, is that what you, I mean, in an operating system?
Well, it takes, yeah, it takes time to build it and get it up and-
I just wanted to know if it was operating.
It is not.
It's not implemented.
It is not.
It's not implemented.
That would be my question, so both systems are non-operative?
We are working towards getting the Exela system up and running, but it is not operating yet. Correct.
What you're just saying is, you know-
It's in process.
The contractor, who didn't have the contract.
Correct. Yes.
Absolved, okay. Now let's get the other one taken care of.
So, again, I, that's pretty much the bulk of my staff report. I did want to mention that one specific point. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Bill?
I think we have some public comments, so I'll just, more information questions, and then we'll proceed. I am, I really would request, and I don't see any reason why you couldn't provide it, in addition to expenditures as listed on page three dash three, page three of five, I think two other critical components are what, not just how much was spent on doing work, but what work was actually done, permits processed, et cetera. In other words, we have no basis for a performance metric-
Okay.
-in the information provided because there's how much work costs, but not how much work was done. I think that's important. And then another aspect of that is the juxtaposition of fees collected versus expenditures.
Okay.
That I noticed in your presentation, you had earlier for budget, you had a CDD, piece of the pie for CDD, for expenditure, but nothing for fees collected, in the other, in the revenue side.
It was in the other, but yes.
Yeah, but, yeah, it was in other, exactly.
I understand your point, Mayor.
So what I'm trying to say is, I would appreciate in this budget process that two additional pieces of information, just a comment.
Number permits processed and the fees collected.
Whatever goes into defining the work accomplished, whether it's permits, you know, licenses, you know, zoning clearances, you know, all the things that get done by the department, that should be juxtaposed to how much it costs to get done, along with the fees that were collected to get that work done against the expenditures.
No problem, we'll get that for you.
I think that's important for council to understand.
Right. Inputs to outputs.
Inputs to outputs.
How much are we spending, and what are we getting for it?
Also, also, also in the same light, recognizing the three specific areas, planning, building and safety, and code enforcement. So each of those-
Yes.
-have the same set of metrics.
Exactly. And then one other, just quick comment, Mr. McClary. I was, I'm disturbed by the community development department overview paragraph, which calls building a division of community development department, as opposed to building being a separate department, which was consistent with both municipal code, the Charles Abbott contract includes their proposal, which calls it the building safety department-
Yeah, that's correct.
-and council direction.
That's correct. The building official does report directly to the city manager, and we'll make that correction.
Thank you.
Duly noted.
Okay, if there's no more, if there are no more questions for the city manager, we have one card. Ben?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Ben Turner. I don't live in the city, I've just got a few comments. I wanted to say that from the stakeholders that have reported back to me, I'm happy to tell you that there has been an improvement in tone, policies, and interaction with the community development department. We are still working, we're looking forward to having stakeholder meetings, and more interested parties will be able to give their input. One of those items actually is the continued push for further separation of building and safety and planning. We'd like to see those two departments very much separate from each other. We understand this interaction, we understand this back and forth, we understand there are cases where planners do need to go back and look at projects even in the field. Those cases are rare, not the norm. So let me go back to my comments here generally after reading the staff report.
Before you go further, Ben, I have my own theories on what you just said about separating the departments. I would be curious as to, because I agree with that, I think that might be one of the solutions. What is your reasoning for wanting them to be more separate?
Double jeopardy has been felt in far too many cases where we have proceeded beyond, we have to build on a foundation. I don't mean a literal foundation, a figurative foundation, from where we move forward into working drawings. That comes at great expense. Consultants would have to put out many tens of thousands of dollars on these large discretionary projects towards perhaps grading. If you then, going back to planning, if planning comes along afterwards and says, oh, I think you need to do this, and I'm going to take you back to planning, you might have undone many thousands of dollars of work. If anybody asks me, what should it look like, I can tell you, just Ventura County, we do a lot of business in Ventura County, I understand it has a bigger budget and more staff, but their policies about how we interact are a good guideline. In fact, a staff member said to me today, I was here submitting a set of plans, and they said to me, you know you can't just submit to building and safety. It was a plan for an interior tenant improvement on a commercial building that had no exterior improvements. They said, you know, you do business in Ventura, you know, you just can't waltz in there and hand it to building safety. And I said, I'm glad you said that, because actually, when I go to planning, they have a no-interest stamp. If you're not doing anything outside the building, you're not changing the use, there's no more square footage, you are on to building safety and never to return to planning.
Okay, so if I understand you correctly, you, when you get a clearance in one place, you want to be able to rely on that, unless it's just, you know, a staff error where it's against the law.
Especially when it looks as if they've gone back and, oh, we found something that we missed the first time. No one's going to write me a check to cover the invoices from the grading consultant or the landscape architect at a cost to the applicant. We need to know where we're moving forward, and if we're moving forward in the right direction.
I just want to reiterate on that, is, I mean, I deal with a lot of jurisdictions. I think many, you know, you have family members that do as well, and the norm is very much, once planning is done, it's done. The design review permit's done, and it turns over, and when the building plans are approved, then it's the building, the contractor, and the people doing work, and the building inspector.
It's typical for-
That's it.
Yeah, typical for building and safety to retain one set of planning stamped documents that they can refer to. The only projects in Ventura County that I go back and have a planning come out to visit the project at the end are coastal projects, and it's only because we have a local coastal program in Ventura that has claws and teeth that they don't want to mess with.
And so, well, I hear, I hear a lot of stories of co-mingling that is, that is not normal in other jurisdictions.
Absolutely not, no other jurisdiction.
That goes on in our jurisdiction.
Santa Paula, Fillmore.
It causes costs and productivity problems, and I think we need to address it.
Definitely.
I just wanted to touch on that, too, and I was telling Mayor Johnson, it's the same thing. My experience with the county is, as soon as you're done with planning, you're done. They stamp you and they send you to building and safety, they don't want to see you again.
And proof of the pudding is timelines. My projects in Ventura County, when a client comes to the office, I'm able to tell them, six months for this type of project, we're more discretionary here, we might be a year and a half, because CECL is involved. Here, two, three years, maybe. For a business owner, that's impossible to plan for. You can't buy a building, get into escrow, and then say, maybe two or three years, doesn't work. That's why you've got empty buildings in Ojai. Sorry, let, can I, shall I just carry on?
Okay, we took your time, so you get to continue, Ben. You've got three minutes.
Thank you. Most members of the public do not realize that building officials and planning staff are not funded by taxpayer allotted budget, but rather directly by applicants' fees. This places the city and staff in a position of acting in many respects as a private business would. They have a fiscal duty to the applicant as their time is deducted from a trust fund that is tied to each project, and this is even more evident when private consultant groups are engaged to represent local government. The differences are very important, however. One applicant, while the applicant has no choice but to use the city for permit requests, there is no other city of Ojai to take our business to, nor can we choose not to interact with the staff appointed. We need the permit, and the only authority to issue is found here at the city. So this places an even greater duty to be transparent, fiscally responsible, and to meet or exceed normal business communication standards. What would the city council say is a normal practice for business response time if the business sought to keep the client. Where I work, we're expected to respond to a client in two business days. If we cannot formulate an answer, we still reach out back to them to acknowledge the receipt of the email and to offer a date certain to respond fully. This has not been the case in Ojai, and I would like to suggest that the city council advises or their consultants that a standard is now adhered to that you choose. These communications should also point to code. It is important to remember that discretionary projects are still analyzed to codes, to CECL and other local standards. Discretionary does not mean that an individual staff member may impose development opinions unsubstantiated by local or state law. If requests for clarification, meeting requests, specific questions are raised, let's set the bar as a performance standard for both groups to agree to always respond within a certain number of business days, and to be willing to quote the codes, laws, and ordinances that we're all held to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. I have a card. Bill Ulrich?
Because we're doing something wrong. William Ulrich, good evening, everyone. I'd just like to clarify a couple of points that I heard referenced here. Number one, it's my understanding that the Exela program will not come online until October of 2017, and since the Exela website touts the purchase, the closing of the deal with the city of Ojai dating ten twenty-nine sixteen, that would be around an even one year to ostensibly bring it up speed. Now, it may occur before that, but the issue of online permit tracking and the assistance that renders to not only the development, the contracting, the applicant community, but just generally speaking, even, even staff, and its unavailability for, it's been, this is something that's been requested for years, is furthered by at least another year, simply because a determination was made by staff to go with the Exela, given that Charles Abbott and Associates had, in its presentation to council, offered this program for free, their program, proprietary program. So it's, I've been asking this question, I haven't received a cogent answer, as to, well, why couldn't Charles Abbott come in and run their program pending bringing Exela online? Different platforms are interchanged in business and in public agencies all the time. Relative to, another observation relative to what Mr. Turner observed, response times and actual cogent, rather than vague illusory, will get back to you by staff in both agencies, both Sites Pacific as well as Charles Abbott, have been rather rife, in my experience, and this is on a basis of professional and personal applications for permits. And then finally, getting back to the question of when the touted Charles Abbott going online active Fridays, issuing building permits and having counter hours, that commenced sometime after an inquiry I made in an email of January sixteen, two thousand and seventeen. Herefore, there was a card there at the building department that said, no permits on Fridays, and that also meant no inspections on Fridays. So the reality of the situation is, as of January sixteen, we were only getting eighty percent of whatever expected performance the city council anticipated in approving the Charles Abbott Associates Incorporated contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, Steve, is Steve still here? Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Steve Quilice, West Eucalyptus Street in the city. I wanted to draw your attention in case you hadn't attended, I think only councilman Haney did, but in case you hadn't seen the- did, but in case you hadn't seen the, the proceedings of the Planning Commission last week, of which I am a member. I had asked a number of questions of city staff, got a number of very cogent answers, but one of my questions was about fire plan checks and inspections on, on applications for building permits and the like. And the, Mr. Weiniger, Winiger, excuse me, had deferred that question to the city building official who responded as follows. I, my question was, I thought that being able to do fire plan checks and such was a part of what we were getting in the new city building official, and why couldn't it be done that way instead of running the gauntlet in, in Camarillo? And the, the response from the city building official was, "CAA has not been contracted with the city to provide fire plan review and inspections at this time." And I'm wondering if that is going to be a condition that persists or if we can get more of this work done closer to home. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Inquiry is, I believe the answer to your question is that there was an option in the contract not yet exercised. So her, her response was not exactly accurate. It is in their contract as an option not yet exercised.
So it's possible.
They're still not performing at the moment.
Yes, but it's, it's a little nuanced response to your, to be clear. It is in the contract, but an option not exercised.
Which means that it's available now, subject to what? The city manager's approval?
And our council.
Council, yeah, council would need, would need to approve that.
It's in, it's in the contract. Was it a budget issue?
It would need to be, council would need a budget for that item, which the council could certainly do as part of your upcoming budget process.
Okay, well, it's unfunded in the contract.
I just, could someone help me remember, we had a discussion with County Fire Department, and I think it was with Mr. Plots, and they had come in and had spoken to us regarding exercising reviews either at the counter in Ventura.
Or coming here.
Or coming here.
They are offering to come here. Yes.
So have, I mean, how many fire clearances do we get a week, a month, or a year? And, and has that been going on? Have they been coming here or have we been sending applicants to Ventura?
We, we've not been approached yet by County Fire in terms of coming in to set up shop. We did have that conversation. We did let them know that we'd be willing to do that. I haven't heard any further from County Fire. Be happy to ring the bell again and see if that's something that they're still interested in, let them know that it's something that the city's still interested in pursuing.
Okay, well, for one, I would be interested in, you know, the, it's not just one-stop shopping, but it's a long ways down to headquarters.
Understood, yeah. I know the.
The point, I would think an initiative from the building official, knowing that that was a, an option and that had been offered by the fire department, to come and have counter time here, rather than just saying, you know, "Well, I'll wait for them to say when they're coming." Why not say, "Let's try it"? Well, some initiative from our building official in this regard.
I, I guess, I think that's exactly what we told County Fire several months ago, and I, I think the door is open and we'd like them to walk through it. We're happy to reiterate that. Perhaps the, the chief could speak to that.
My recollection was that one of the reasons why we put that into the contract as an unexecuted option at this point was because the fire department vehemently did not want us to be doing that type of plan check in-house. And to kind of, and we were very seriously considering having the consultant do it, and the, the County Fire said, "Well, as an alternative, we're willing to come to Ojai to do it because at the time we had to send people all the way down to Camarillo."
Correct.
And for them not to come forward gives us every bit more reason probably to think about executing that option.
And then I just want to throw, I want to throw something else out there that I don't think it's fair that we throw the building inspector under the bus regarding her not, or them not taking initiative.
Or the fire department.
It's something that we, that we said we were going to do, so it falls back onto our laps.
Yeah, I think, I think the fire department knows that we really like that service if they can work it out with the city manager.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Since I have the, quickly of the price, also want to mention that Greg Robinson is here from Charles Abbott Associates. If you had any questions about, about their management of the contract, Mr. Robinson is back in the audience.
I may.
He's the manager from the contractor, right?
Correct. He's with Charles.
He's the manager from the city.
That's correct.
He's the contract manager for us. Okay, well.
Just letting you know he was.
Do you have any concerns?
No, sir.
Okay, good.
Well, I did.
Okay.
Okay.
Or is yours?
Well, have we, I'm sorry, Mayor, did we close the public?
I'm sorry.
Comments? Are we done with public comments?
We don't have any more cards.
Do you want to close the public comment section in?
Well, we usually don't close the comment. It's not public hearing, but.
It's not a formal public hearing.
The famous last words?
There you go.
Is there anyone else that I may have lost their card? Peggy, did you want to weigh in on? No, I'm just joking.
I'm asking you to weigh in.
I'm sure you are.
I'm sure you are.
Okay, so now it's where? It's amongst us as to what, Bill, you have.
He starts stand up. Maybe he wants to come to the podium.
That's only if Bill has the question.
Yeah, I will at the right time.
Okay.
Okay, now, now we, can Bill? It's all yours.
Well, it shouldn't be all mine, but, Mr. Robinson, I did have a question on the, on the permit tracking aspect, okay? I was on the interview team, as you well know, if you recall.
I was, actually, I wasn't at that interview.
Well, I know, but I figured you probably were, people reported to you who was there and everything.
His reputation usually precedes him and follows him afterward.
I was on it too, but you wouldn't know it.
Suffice to say that the.
So that was the one.
Improving, yeah, right. Improving customer service on the permit tracking was, it was actually, I would, fair to say, a priority.
Yes, it was.
In the interview process, okay? So obviously, it's, it's a legitimate concern of council to be looking at this long delay in achieving that. I know the, the, the staff declined the proprietary system, bought another system, so I have two questions, all right? One is, it was, it was raised by, remember the public here, that in fact, they're not really mutually exclusive, that one can start with one platform and switch to another. I, I, I'm not sure that's true, but I wanted to give you an opportunity to respond. That's question number one. And then question, you know, that gets into export and of data and they, you know, so on, so forth. And, and then number two is, I'd like you to respond to. So first question, I just stated, and then number two is, does the offer, are, okay, are you prepared to help implement another platform in any way, shape, or form as part of this contract?
Yeah, it's still on the table.
Huh?
Still on the table.
It's still on the table as well. Okay. And then the first question?
I, I'd have to check with Exela, get back to you how they're exporting, because sometimes they charge for those exports and.
Right.
You know, I, I've known in the past with other, other, other providers when we've taken over, it's sometimes.
But you do, Philly, you have the expertise in-house to.
Right. I think, I think the answer, Bill.
But it may be with implementation of another platform.
The, the answer is if the fee is right, no case is hopeless, right?
Well, yeah.
Exactly. I mean, that's, I mean, there's a cost associated potentially, so you'll get back to us, right?
There's no charge from our aspect. I just make.
On, on your platform.
Our platform.
But you would probably, you would obviously, we, we need to compensate you for helping to implement another platform.
Hopefully not. If, a lot of times there's charges from them to export the data.
The point being is, I think it's, clearly that was one of the purposes for engaging your contract, was this accomplishing this, and I think we all have an interest on this council in, in accelerating that improvement in customer service.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, there's someone else that wants to speak.
Oh, Renee.
Hi, my name's Renee Mario. I'm the contract building official. I have been working with Exela for the last, I'd say, three weeks, started working with them directly. I now have a scheduled meeting with them once a week to talk with Sidwell, who's the implementation company for Exela, and we are starting the process of getting this system up and running. So the problem with an off-the-shelf system is that it's not configured to meet Ojai's business practices and how we issue permits, how we have approvals, agencies, and everything else. For instance, Exela's standard platform is that if you come in to pull a kitchen remodel and you have a building permit, a plumbing permit, an electrical permit, Exela requires you create three records in the system for each one of those permits. As opposed to what facilitates an easier process for the applicant is that you get one application that contains three permits. So that's the starting point for us to get them to configure their off-the-shelf system in this format. So I've sent them our fees. They have our fee schedule. They've implemented the fees. They are working on creating this record type, and then I can move forward from there. And it becomes a point of trying to adjust our business practices to fit the software or does the software fit our business practices?
Well, that's the question that I want to raise. You just, you just set up my question.
Okay.
We've bought the system. It's a sunk cost. It's not recoverable. The basic concept in, in economics is that sunk costs do not rationally work. You do not include sunk costs in your decision about how to move forward, because it's done. You can't recover it. So if we're going to spend more to implement, from this point forward, to implement another platform than using Abbott's platform, is that a rational decision?
I'm not sure whether it's going to cost the city more or not yet. I'm trying to get that answer out of Sidwell as to.
You understand my question?
Absolutely, and that.
Don't keep putting bad, you know, good money down a bad hole.
I understand. I mean, the city did pay for.
It's a sunk cost. It's done.
The sunk cost, and I'm still trying to get a straight answer from Exela onto exactly what the scope of that package is.
Just a simple question to add on to this. Any program that you buy off the shelf that you install, there's a learning curve.
Right.
And you still have to take your data and figure out how to implement it into that program. So there is going to be additional costs. There's going to be the cost of learning and the cost of implementing. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And some of these questions, I guess, rather than directing it at Renee, who is kind of.
Well, I've just been working directly with Exela, so.
I appreciate the briefing. I appreciate that.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, you didn't know I've been working with them.
This is all an education for all of us. We appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, Renee.
And I've been through a couple software implementations in different cities, so I kind of been through the process a couple times. Like I said, I'm trying to get some straight answers from them.
It's the most cost-effective option, starting now, not looking at sunk costs. That's the rational approach.
Okay. I have a meeting on Thursday with him. I'll see if I can get a direct answer.
Thank you, Renee. I only one question of the city manager, McClary. This should be an easy one. This is, well, it shouldn't be easy. The sign, the efforts that you and the staff are making on the sign ordinance, have we, does that have anything to do with the, these two contracts or is that a separate thing?
Yes, that's being handled by the code enforcement contract through Charles Abbott Associates.
Okay, how are we doing?
Well, we're, we did the letters and we're, I think we've got a weekend enforcement scheduled coming up. We, in the, in the outreach to the merchants, we told them that we're giving them until June 1st to comply. So after June 1st, we will be going at them much, much harder. Again, the idea has been to try to get them to comply in a soft way without having to go to citations, but the word that we gave them was, you know, after June 1st, you know, citations are fair game, so.
Okay.
So we are, we are actively working, I am actively working with them to make sure that we are on track with that and pursuing that.
So we're closed, then, Ren?
We are.
I have a simple question and almost on the same lines as the, on page three of two or page two of five, it can get confusing. We talk about having, CAA staff has developed a permit placard.
Yes.
And I keep asking about this placard, and I keep looking for these placards, and I haven't seen the placards. Do we have a picture of a placard?
I have better than that. They're hot off the press, so.
Glad you asked.
Here you are.
Is that going to be our color?
That is going to be our color. Green means go.
Great.
These are going to be.
Apple have to talk about things for three years.
Thank you, Steve.
These are going to be.
You're grateful.
Well, see, I have only been with you for, for one, so I don't know what they were doing the other two years.
Great, thank you.
So we've made the, these, these are going to be issued for all building permits. The homeowner or the property owner will be required to post it in a conspicuous location, front door or front gate or a fence or something like that.
It's invisible from the street.
Right, and the idea would be that the, the neighbors or the county are able to know, "Hey, is that activity that's going on, is it legitimate? Do they have a building permit?"
Wonderful.
So there you are.
And along with that, I dropped off a Planning Division's signage from the city, from the city of Santa, or the county of Santa Barbara. Is there any way that we can look at figuring out how to implement that? And what that does is that actually when you go through planning and you, and you are done, it's another placard that you put on your front yard, and it actually states what you're doing, what you're, what you're requesting to be done, and that you have been approved. So that tells you that you've been through plan check, that everyone knows that you're above board, and then this card says now that you're in the building and safety side of it. So I'd like to see if we could talk to Renee and, and try and implement that to, or not Renee, but to Mr. Winiger.
I'll look into it for him.
To implement that.
You bet.
Thank you.
So you're saying this is a customary thing?
Yes.
In other jurisdictions?
Yes.
I was just wondering if it violated our, the signs under our sign ordinance.
City signs are exempt.
It's usually brighter. It's usually a vibrant green or a vibrant orange.
I like color chips, so the planning can review this, Steve. Go ahead.
I think the color.
As long as it's not public art.
Before the council, so that we can vote on what color we want things on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a, a comment. I get a lot of, I don't get, I probably fewer than anyone else maybe on the council get, do not get a lot of comments on the, the planning or the building department, but I do get a few. And one of them is the fact that it's very difficult to track a permit. And I guess my question is, and that I think, well, I think we ought to have this come back again to give us an update on the Exela program.
Absolutely.
Because we contracted for that, as Mr. Ulrich indicated, in October. That was seven months ago, and our building official has just met with them once. And it looks like an off-the-shelf program that we purchased is no longer going to be off the shelf if it's got to be tailor-made to whatever it is we need. And it's now gone, not going to be available for another five months. So I think at some point, we've got to have, have something that comes back before us to say, "Pull the plug on it or keep going forward."
Sure, we'll do that.
Our, I, I can tell you that having been on the council when we approved it, it seemed as though this was going to be implemented very easily, very quickly, and it made sense to buy it at that time. Whereas if all of a sudden now we're finding out the program doesn't do what we want it to do, it may be time to say, "Cut our losses and move on to something else."
Understood.
And then I had one more question, Mayor.
Ren?
This is my last question. Is we've been trying to hire an associate planner for how many years now?
Probably pushing on two years now.
Yeah. Can we check into the cost of a headhunter and what it's going to take to actually get a planner here?
We can do that.
Because I know we've been recruiting in-house, but the reality is we can't go to other cities or other agencies and actually look at the best and the brightest planners and ask them to come. So a headhunter service would actually offer us that opportunity.
Okay, well, we'll certainly take a look at that. We can bring that option back to the council. I know, I know we have a couple applicants that we're planning to interview soon, but no guarantees yet.
All right. One of the other things besides permit tracking that we were, we focused on as a goal is, is intelligent evolution of our code enforcement beyond just complaint-driven. That doesn't mean go out and patrol like, you know, "We got to find something today." I don't mean that. But we did identify problems with a, just a complaint-driven system as opposed to, you know, going too far the other way and, you know, having people out there constantly searching for ways to give people a problem.
Right.
But there's some kind of in-between that we, and that was one of the reasons for hiring Abbott, was to move in that direction, because we talked about code enforcement evolution at that time. And I think one of the issues I want to raise in, that's related to that, in terms of initiative versus just being reactive, is the, is the issue with, you know, some clarity that we're now having to achieve about who handles notifications about brush clearance and getting brush clearance done inside the wildfire interface within the city limits.
Right.
And so here we are, kind of, you know, I guess what I'm looking for is, I, I hope that we get more proactive about identifying rather than these issues and resolving them, kind of like what happened with the fire hydrants when we found out they weren't being tested on any kind of regular basis.
Right, right, with Golden State, right.
And we're finding out, no one's really clearly the people sending out the notices for brush clearance inside, well inside the city limits. You know, those are kind of things that need to be not just reacted to when citizens raise the issue, but identified and dealt with, you know, in a, in a more proactive and intelligent way. I just want to make that comment.
Understood. Thank you for the feedback.
Okay. Any other? I have one question for you.
I'm done.
It's contagious, Bill. You know, I've been sitting too close to you. I have a question. Is it the fire service or the building and safety service that inspect? Is it the fire service or the building and safety service that inspects like emergency lighting in a building, or a fire extinguisher, or a defibrillator? Who does that?
Oh, boy. I would have to defer that question. I do not know.
Fire?
Fire has a role in it. I don't know.
Okay. I'd like, I'll meet, we don't have to take it up tonight.
Okay.
I'll meet with you. I suspect strongly that somehow, those kinds of things in our public buildings, or at least, say, in the parks, have slipped through the cracks.
Ah, okay.
So, I'll, good. Okay. Thank you.
You got it.
Okay. Well, that takes us to, Councilmember reports. Anybody have one? I've got a couple.
I have one quick one.
Okay, go.
We have gotten a report on what to do, a preliminary analysis of our broadband issue of what options would be. Mr. Vega, did you get the report from Mr. Stensel and EDCV C? I mean, I think I'd be looking...
Stensley?
Stensley, I'd be looking forward to meeting with you about defining those options and what initiatives council could take.
Yeah, so he did send me a draft last week. He said they're going to work on finalizing it this week.
Right.
So, you might have gotten that same thing.
Right.
And then, I will meet with him and determine next steps.
I just want to report to the council and the community that we're making progress on this. It's an important initiative, from a lot of reasons, one of which is further diversification of our economy away from pure tourist-based economies, businesses. So, we're working on it.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Paul, do you have anything?
I just wanted to say, at the last meeting, I had indicated I was going to go to the groundbreaking for Gold Coast Transit, the facility in Oxnard. And I did. And it was, it was a well-attended, you know, shovel ceremony. Julia Bradley was there, along with a number of mayors, and myself, and board members, obviously. And if anybody's interested in seeing it, it's, if you're, if you go behind where Costco is, next to the Toyota dealership, there's, there's about 18 acres there that's being developed for the new transit facility. Thirty-five million dollar project. And if anybody wants to just walk back in there, they'd be glad to give you a little cook's tour, but it, it moves fast. It's going to be an 18-month project, but, yeah. State-of-the-art, zero, zero water, totally, at this point in time, you know, everything is, is contained on site. Yeah, can, contained within it. Gray water, the whole, the whole bit, so...
Susan, do you have anything?
Uh, well, Councilmember Wyrick and Haney and I went to the school board meeting. We had, we had a tour, and I thought the meeting was, for me, very educational, and I came away feeling that the school board really does have the best interest of the community at heart. They explained that they are not, they had, had to make a choice. Their process was not going to be the highest bidder, but what, what served the community the best. Maybe you can help me explain it. I, I don't know what else to say. It was just a discussion. No decisions were made. There was a number of speakers who, I think, verified my own feeling that this is, you know, very important for the future of Ojai, what we do with these buildings. But, it also seemed to me that it was very, very occupied.
I know.
Well, it's actually, it's interesting that you say that, because when I walked it, I felt it was probably one of the most underused piece of property in this community. They, the facilities that they have and are using are exceptional. In fact, you know, they have a horticulture center that I didn't, I had no idea that they had.
Yeah, yeah. That's great.
But, so there were some, some good things. One of the things that I walked away with is, and again, it's the legal process, and that's where we are right now. We've posted a letter of concern that we would like to look at that site. The reality is, I walked away saying, I'm not sure what we want to do with it, and what funding source we have to do with it. We might be, at this stage, be a better player in the development of that site by backing out of it, and then letting it move to the next level, where we have a lot more input and a lot more say in how that site's going to be developed. And I stress that, 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 you know, their dilemma is, they need a funding source from areas that are outside the city limits, and that site is at the heart of our community. So, there's going to be two different groups of people pulling two different ways on what they want to do, and what, and how that facility's going to be used. So, that was, that was my comment. But, it was a large facility, large, with a lot of potential.
Okay.
And then, you know, I attended BCOG and the VCTC, and we had our Libby Bowl committee meeting this morning. And, again, we're, we're looking at, the Libby Bowl's probably the most important thing is, I didn't bring the ride out with me, but the last event, the Opera Event for the Ojai Youth, first of all, was sold out. And, they, that was one of the three waivers that we gave. And, again, when I say sold out, it's a one-day, it's a one-day, one-hour event with three days prior to practice. But, it's the fact that this is the Ojai Youth Opera, and, and it's an incredible program. And everyone, we had five of our members attend, and they just all walked away blown away, but how incredible that event was. So, that tells me that we're, when we look at Ojai and we look at Libby, that one of the most important components of it is the community side of it. The commercial side, we're always hoping is going to help support that. But, getting community in and community using that bowl is real, real important.
Thank you. I have three items. One, Bill, Susan and I attended the ribbon cutting over at Sarasota Park for the picnic shelters and the improvements they made over there. And the, the way in which the space is being used now is not only better, I think, for the community, but as I only was joking, partially, in Ojai, as hot as it gets, and it's getting hotter, to have those shelters really expands the ability, you know, or the comfort to have people out there using it.
They're really constructed well.
Yeah, right. And they, yeah, they were built properly in the sense of, you know, for not having high maintenance. Usually end up with wooden structures in this valley, or at least anything that touches the ground deteriorates, or the termites get it. As just an announcement, I've been asked to testify on behalf of the city for the Ojai Playhouse Thursday morning. So, for what that's worth, I'll report, well, you'll probably read it in the paper afterwards if we get a decision from the judge. Steve Colome and Bob Daddy both have really been spending some time on this idea of clean energy gardening equipment, trying to get ahead of the curve. Steve wrote a, a proposal of sorts, and he and I went down to the APCD, because there was $60,000 available. And we told them that we had some thoughts on how the city of Ojai might be a pilot project for demonstrating how this can work. The debate was sort of between, are you asking to have your equipment replaced with clean energy, or is it a beta site? And we said, well, it's somewhere in between. So, they made the commitment of the money, but they said conditionally for us to come back and, you know, talk with the city, which I told them I took as a counteroffer, because I didn't have the authority to commit the city. But, Steve, our Steve here, Steve Colome, we're going to meet with the city manager, Greg Grant, is, was helping us by giving us an inventory of what kinds of stuff we could do. The, the real sticking point is, is that, you know, you don't want to, someone give you, or the people who give you $60,000 don't want you then to put all of your old dirty air-polluting equipment on Craigslist and sell it. So, they want to be sure that it goes away. On the other hand, I said, yeah, but the city doesn't want to destroy the dirty old stuff that's still legal and that we've already invested in, only to find out that we've tried this, and for whatever reason, maybe it didn't work so well. So, then we have to, they said, we have to pay them their $60,000 back, and we're sitting here with no equipment. So, they said, okay, let's all sit down together, see if we can make a win out of this. So, anyway, that was sort of a...
Can I touch on that too, Mayor?
Yeah.
You know, I, I did meet with Bob and Steve too, early on in this, and I have recently written a letter to the mayor and to the Public Works Director for the city of South Pasadena. And I'm waiting for a response, but I plan on going up there and meeting with them, and actually seeing their contract service, and how many acres that they're actually performing their AZAG on. So, I think, I think it's a win for this community if it's done right.
Yeah.
Great.
It's, at the, we were greeted by the advisory board down at APCD. Oh, yeah, Ojai, second dirtiest area in the county. And that, but that in this case was, was not a pejorative, but it did help, which takes us back to the whole issue. So, anyway, that's all I have. What do we, Steve?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. Tomorrow, we are conducting the interviews for the medical cannabis licenses for the dispensary and delivery. So, we hopefully will be getting through those and making a decision quickly.
Thank you for the adjustments you made in the, in the screening process. I know that was extra work for you.
You're welcome. The only thing that I really wanted to mention was just to briefly go through a list of potential agenda items for the June 13th meeting, if you want to go and do that at this time.
That's actually our next agenda item.
It is? So, if you're ready at this point, we'll proceed.
Well, I have some questions for you and your city manager.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. If that's okay?
Yes.
Before we get into future...
Absolutely. I did not mean to jump ahead.
Maybe one of us should say, it's not okay, just to see what we do.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, no, pardon me.
Yeah, I know, and I'll shut up, you know?
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It's not okay?
Okay, I'll shut up.
No, go ahead.
I have, I instructed some people that work for us that, you know, July 1st, they
need to use electric blowers, because that, that's when the law will be, you know? The law will start to be enforced, you know? And it, it was very obvious to me immediately, and they said, oh, well, I'll go, and they said, well, go down to the city, and they don't speak English very well, and they came back more confused.
Okay.
And I'm thinking, we need to have, I would request, consideration of staff to put together a bilingual information sheet as to what the law is about the use of gas blowers when we lift suspension as of July 1st, and maybe even consider sending out letters to our license holders. It would be very helpful.
Why don't we notice it? Why don't we notice it in Ojai Valley News?
You know, I just, I just, and the bilingual aspect, I think, is important in this situation. And maybe even consider looking at bilingual intake forms for things like business licenses and things.
That would be a little more of a, of a lengthy process. We could certainly look into that. I probably want to come up with a budget number, but the, the info sheet, that would be easy to do.
Yeah. I'm just thinking it might be useful.
Sure.
Because I, this person, you know, volunteered, who wasn't a, you know, English was a second language.
Okay.
They went down to the city to get more information on the detail and came back more confused.
Okay. Understood.
So, we are going to be starting to, you know, lifting the enforcement suspension out of July 1st.
Okay. Yeah, that wouldn't be a, not a, not a significant cost for us to get, get a professional translator to take care of that.
Request, you know?
Sure. We can do that.
And then, the second thing, really quick, is that there is the issue of the, you raised the issue of the cannabis licenses.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Two things. Port Huonimi has passed an enabling ordinance yesterday.
I heard that was coming.
Very broad. We're clearly not the only activity in Ventura County.
May I ask, did that include medical and recreation?
Yes.
Okay.
Way beyond what we want to do. But, I just pointed out, we're, there's a lot of activity in the, in the county, not just us anymore. And also, I want to express my, my personal opinion, and see if any of us wants to join me, that I, I think we should, I've been hearing a lot of feedback about the problems of limiting the licensed activity to just the Bryant Edition.
Mm-hmm.
And that we consider the, the area, the C1 zone east of Park, or on the east end, as if it turns, if we have, turns out that we have problems with just the Bryant Edition issue, the Bryant Edition supply of available sites. That's just my personal opinion, and I want to express that, and see if anybody else wants to express an opinion about it.
Could you clarify the other area?
Well, it's not on the agenda, though, is it?
Oh, oh.
I interpreted that to be a request, if there was a second, to ask that the council consider the matter a future agenda. Certainly could make a decision tonight.
I'd like to see a map of it.
Okay.
So, we've had, one...
But I would support...
And I also understood the request to be, in terms of the area, right now, medical cannabis businesses of the two allowed types are only permitted in the Bryant Circle and adjacent Bryant Street, M1 and MPD-zoned areas. And I understand the request to be to also consider the C1 zone east of Park Road.
And that, that's a city manager discretionary decision.
At the moment, unless the council does it.
Right. I just wanted to raise the issue.
Little clarification. Part of what I think I heard there was, if, if for some reason we're not able to resolve issuing licenses to the current round of applicants within the Bryant Circle area...
There's not sufficient sites, or...
That you'd like us to take immediate...
If we're running into a problem with our, I just want to point that out, that I've gotten a lot of feedback.
Okay.
And requests that we consider, you know, direction to change the city manager's discretionary decision to go to adjacent to the Bryant Edition along the C1 zone east of Park. I just want to raise the issue tonight. I'd certainly be willing to bring back more discussion of that, a future agenda item.
Well, I think the city manager's question is really, do you want to pause the interview process?
No.
Go for tomorrow?
No.
Or not? Or the decision on the issuing of the permits.
Why don't we just finish what you're doing?
Right.
Report back on where we are?
Understood.
And then, if this becomes an issue, we'll, okay?
Got it. Clear. Thank you.
I'm done.
He's done. Okay.
Future agenda items.
Paul, did you want to put one on?
No.
Any future agenda items?
I was just thinking of the permit tracking system that we were all talking about. Could we set that on, and it wouldn't be for the next agenda, but say, the first, or the, the last meeting in June?
I was going to recommend June 27th. I was going to recommend June 27th.
Okay. Okay. We're in agreement then. I would like.
Yes, we are.
So we could at least know where we are.
Sure. We'll come back with a report, for sure, and potential options as well, if that's in the cards.
Mr. Mayor, where are we in bringing back the leaf blowers? Wasn't that supposed to be the first part of June?
Well, let's see, what, was it in March that we?
There was a six-month.
We tabled it. We said not, not, I didn't know where the not less than six weeks came from, but it'll be back before the six months. I'm going to, I was hoping to have it back before July 1st. I'm.
Well, I feel, I feel like we're working on it with Councilmember Haney going to Pasadena. We had the demonstration in Libby Park.
Yeah.
We're moving forward, I feel, to finding a resolution.
Well, we'll just bring the topic back up because it's your motion that's on the floor. So, you want to, should we shoot for, you want it back in?
I would like it back in June, only because I'd like my motion to be voted on prior to the moratorium on enforcement being lifted.
Okay. We have a, looks like a pretty crowded agenda for the 13th. Would June 27th be acceptable?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would be the leaf blower enforcement?
It's a future agenda.
Okay. I, oh, are you done? I have a question. There's something I always wanted to bring up, but it always seems to be so late, and it's only 10 to 10, not 10 to midnight.
Close session.
Yeah, I know we do. But can I, here's my question. I would like to investigate if we can change the lighting in City Hall. You know, we want to create a friendly atmosphere, and many, many people have complained about the lighting. Gives me a headache, it gives other people a headache, and some of us are sitting under this lighting for six hours when we start at 6:00 P.M. So is this something I speak with you personally? Is it an agenda item? How do we go about it?
Well, actually, I think your timing is perfect, and assuming there's some support from the council, I mean, the perfect time to look at that is in the budget process.
Yeah, that, yeah, yeah.
We can come forward with the costs, and we can look at that. So if that's something the council would like us to look into, we can, we can work on that proposal.
In fact, Roger Conrad, for, for the last at least two or three years, every time that I was at, you know, attending the Arts Commission, was always bringing up the fact that these lights are horrible in here.
Yeah.
This is obsolete lighting.
Well, actually, it used to be even worse. We actually improved the, we actually got better lighting a few years back, but I understand that the concern still exists. Concern still be, that the concern still exists.
This is obsolete now.
Yeah. Oh, good. Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great.
Okay. Bill, you have some more agenda?
Two things. There have been two recommendations from the Historic Preservation Commission for landmarking now, and two properties.
Right.
Those recommendations then go to council.
Correct.
I would like to have a date certain for, in June, for those recommendations to come to council.
Okay. Let me get with the acting CDD director and we'll get a date back to you.
Again, those are recommendations from the commission to us.
Right.
So there shouldn't be a lot of staff reporting needed, since the staff report was already made to the Planning Commission, made Preservation Commission.
We'll get them scheduled.
They deliberated on that, made their recommendations, and I, I just think it's a good practice for those recommendations to go to council quickly.
Understood.
What is the process for getting something started on a building that is, I know they call them, what, sites of interest or merit?
Oh.
Is that? But for example, I'm going to go test, I'm going down to testify.
How much time do we have, Mayor?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry I didn't bring that, forget that term.
It's called the proverbial can of worms out there.
I'm going to be testifying in a trial about a building that I, I'm wondering why it hadn't had some sort of designation because the theater or the...
Right.
Admittedly, it's not the original theater, and in some cases, I don't think, but it's the original of what's there, and it's been a long time in that position. I'm just curious, how do we, where do we plug that in? Do we take that to the Historic Preservation Group when they start it, or does the council refer them, or?
Either of those is a valid option.
Right.
To designate a property as a landmark, there's three possible ways. Applicant requesting, HPC starts, or the council starts, it refers it back to HPC, then back to council.
Okay. I'll talk to the owner.
I'm also going to think one of the most important things that that theater means to this community is it has nothing to do with the historic relationship.
It's a cultural fabric.
Right, absolutely.
It's the cultural fabric of our community.
Yeah. And you know more than anyone about how to testify.
Right, yeah. It's a cultural fabric, but I, you know, people who take a more cynical view of us up here in Ohio, saying, oh, it's that great, why haven't you this, or why haven't you that? So anyway, that's the reason for the question.
My last item, and I promise I'll be done with future agenda items, is the budget schedule we have laid out proved to be inadequate last, it's the same budget type of system we had last year for budget review. It proved to be inadequate. We got rushed at the end.
Oh, yeah.
We have problem. I, I'm wondering, I know it's a big imposition, but rather than having, trying to squeeze these one-hour special things and mixing with other items, I'm whether, whether we ought to do kind of what we did on our, looking at goals and et cetera, and consider a Saturday budget meeting.
Oh, I would support that.
Perhaps June 10th.
Yeah. And that's what Bob Daddy.
Where we have time to really dig into it and understand it.
So you want that in addition to the standalone budget workshop meeting on June 6th?
I would call it a place, a replacement.
Oh, so in lieu of meeting on Tuesday, June 6th?
Yeah. Have a June 10th Saturday, long.
And is the target to have an approved budget, hopefully by, what, the 13th or whatever?
13th or the 27th. Right. Right.
That's my suggestion.
Okay.
I would, I would highly recommend that because our meetings are long, and then we would start at 7:00, and we would have a fresh, you know, our...
Sure.
And then, and would open it up to the public that can't come.
Understand.
Yeah, we'd get more public participation on a Saturday as well.
Understood. Just so that everybody's absolutely clear, the, the budget workshop that we're proposing on Tuesday, June 6th at 6:00 P.M., there's no regular meeting to follow that would be an evening dedicated just to go through the budget.
I understand that.
Okay.
I just, and I'm not against having both, but I just.
Got it.
Sorry.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I think a Saturday would be better than a Tuesday night.
Okay. I'm dead. I'm out of town that weekend.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But that doesn't mean that you can't go ahead.
Well, you're a key part of this.
No, no, no.
Okay.
Is that, isn't the music festival?
Well, perhaps we could see how far we get on June 6th with the, and then we could always schedule a subsequent one, weekday weekend, something like that. We do have some flexibility going forward in June, but I understand where you're coming from.
And I have one last question.
But I know, I know we're packed in here. Do we have, do we have a report on the RFP for cultural resources, and do we have a sense when that is coming back?
I was about to get to that, council member. I was going to note that as an item that we're proposing for the June 13th meeting. The period did close, and we did have some responses to that, and so the plan would be to bring that forward at the June 13th council meeting.
Great.
For council direction.
Yeah. What about June 3, Saturday? Is that you out of town then?
I think there's a lot happening on June 3.
All right. Well, let's just.
The music festival is after that.
Well, maybe we just leave it for the Tuesday night.
I could be wrong. I could be wrong.
Let's do, let's just leave it. I'm sorry I brought it up.
No.
Well, actually, I think it's, I do think it's important, and we have public comments on it, the fact that the public would like to, to be able to participate and actually get a better sense of how this budget process is done. I'm not opposed to the third if it's open. Can you look into it and get back to us?
That's what council wants.
You guys all for that?
Is Saturday the 3rd special, by the way?
What happened?
That's the weekend of the wine festival.
Okay. All right. Well, then let's just stick with what we got.
We'll do the best we can, and then...
The point being, we really need to really have the time to understand it.
Understand. Okay.
How about this, as just another substitution, is there any way that instead of starting at 6:00, that we could start at 4:00? Could we start a little?
I was thinking 7:00.
No, I'm thinking of earlier to give us more time to actually go through this in a proper manner. And when we're done, we're done.
I have a question. The special meeting, was that supposed to be open-ended or one hour?
Open-ended.
Okay. I didn't understand that at first, so.
Well, not completely open-ended, but.
But, okay, so the June, and the reason for starting it at 6:00, if there's no meeting afterwards, what's the reason for starting at 6:00?
Just to give us additional time.
Okay. So the concern that Bob Daddy had was that working people couldn't come at 6:00? I mean, is there some way to, are you glaring at me?
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that here's your choice. If you start at 7:00 and we're till midnight, is that your choice, or would you prefer to have the process and have people come in as they're, as they're coming off of work and available? That's all I'm trying to say.
I'm open to anything that works. I, I don't know what works best. Any, my time on that day is totally flexible.
I guess we'll start at 6:00 and see what happens.
Keep it at 6:00 is, okay. All right.
Back to the list then for June 13th, if I may? So in addition to the cultural, the RFP for cultural services coming forward, interesting, we had a citizen mention earlier, the cops, the citizens' option for public safety, that's actually coming as a consent calendar item for council approval on June 13th. We have the, we do have a public hearing scheduled for the budget. We don't need to adopt that night. We have two other public hearings for 13th Lighting and Landscape Districts 1 and 3, and also Plaza Maintenance District. Don't expect those to be very lengthy. Have a request from Ojai Flow for some type of letter of support from the city regarding the change in the, the representation of the OB-GMA board. So we'd like to perhaps discuss and see if we can bring something back on the 13th with that. That's, that's timely. Also, we need to bring forward the annual request for sheriff services as part of the contract. That's a required step, so we'll put that on for June 13th as well, with councils okay. We're still working on the fire code. I know we've reached out to the BAB, and they're working on getting response back to us. I don't think we'll have that ready for June 13th. And I'm not sure, not quite sure the sense, the council, on when you wanted to bring back the Sir Zodi Park master plan. I know council members want a little more time to go out there and view the site and digest the information, so I don't know if you wanted to try to bring that back on the 13th, or wait until we get through the budget process.
They must have loved it.
No, it was different. Yeah, but we did go out and we walk, I don't have any reason to delay it.
Okay. All right.
I think you're clear on some of the things we were looking for.
Yeah.
Improvements.
Yeah. So as long as we can get staff's house in order, we'll, we'll, we'll aim to get that to you on the 13th. Quarter early city manager evaluation for closed session would be the one item for closed session at this point. And, oh, thank you. Yes, right there in my pink pen. And the direction from council tonight to bring back the issue on the referendum.
What about the Pat Weinberger memorial plaque? That, it's not time-sensitive, but it was mentioned.
I'm open, I'm certainly open to it.
Yeah.
Proposals, if someone wants you, work on it. Yeah, I think that'd be great. I like.
Okay. Susan, I'll do something.
I mean, a significant part of our history, I certainly, I'd certainly be receptive to ideas.
I just don't want to get lost, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I like the big rock, little rock.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. That's all I had on my list.
Okay.
Okay. I guess we are journeying to a closed session, is that right?
Three closed sessions to briefly announce, as required, what will be considered in closed session. First, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Southern California Gas Company versus J&amp;H Engineering, an existing lawsuit. Second, conference legal counsel, consideration of initiation of litigation, one case. Third, conference of labor negotiators, designated representative, city manager, Mr. McClary, employees at issue, all unrepresented employees. I expect a potential report out on the first litigation item only, not the other items. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So the City Council met in closed session to consider three items. Existing litigation for the SoCal Gas Company case, initiating litigation in one case, labor negotiations, all unrepresented employees. The only report out is the existing litigation the City Council directed the City Attorney to defend the case. Thank you.